Chair Antares, if it's okay with you, I'll jump into our agenda of study session items for public hearing for next month in July.
Yeah, that's great. Go ahead.
Thank you. First one is CUP 2031. This is a conditional use permit for accessory structure over 3,000 square feet on 15 acres in the RR5 Royal Residential 5 acre minimum parcel zone. And this is in the Baderville area. And Mr. Short, Bob Short, is managing this. He's already shared his screen. You can see, and Bob can explain this case. Thanks, Bob. Bob?
Good evening, Commissioner. Sorry, had my mic muted there. This is in the RR5 zone. It's out in Baderville, way out in west and north Baderville, right at the edge of the forest, all around this site here that you see. That's going to be Forest Service land. This is a private road that comes up from down in the south. We've already got two letters of support for this case because it's way out at the edge of the property. No one's going to see it. No one's going to come down this road. On the other hand, it's a really nice building as well. So it's not a bad building at all. You can see the building right here. Can everybody see my cursor? And then they're also going to build a home and then a garage here. And you can see there's septic drain field and septic system right there. So the barn is 64 by 100. It makes it about 6,400 square feet. It's quite a large barn. And I'll also show you, because I think you want to see this, the 3D renderings, which are really nice. It's a really nice building. The, it does not look like it's 6,400 square feet, honestly, but I'm not sure how that works out because this front would have to be 64 feet wide and it's just two garage doors. So, but in either case, it is a really nice building, as you can see. Hopefully you can see all of these. Is everybody seeing these?
Yep.
Okay, good. So it looks like a nice building. I don't really see any issues with this. It looks like they're getting very good neighborhood support. The applicant's attorney is here. If you have any questions for them, otherwise, that's, I'll take any questions from you if you have any.
Yeah, Bob, just one thing I'd like to add. I had a little difficulty finding this based on the parcel number. I had to do a little bit of look at my last digits or 001Y for anyone else who wants to pull that up.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. I think I discovered that and corrected that. But yeah, I believe you were right. You are right about that. Sorry about that.
Nevertheless.
It's way out there in Baderville. Thanks for correcting that for us.
The description did make it fairly easy to find. And knowing what you were talking about made it easy too. It's not a problem, really.
Any other questions on this?
Thanks, Bob.
All right, thanks.
All right. So Chair Antares, the next case for next month, public hearing, is CUP 2032, conditional use permit for campground on three parcels, 120 acres in the G-zone in the valley area. And Zach is managing this case.
I'm just pulling up the site plan right now. Are you all seeing the site plan? Or this is an aerial map. So, um, so this is a campground for actually three separate parcels. This is the valley area. So this is Highway 64, Highway 180 here, the airport, of course, then High Grove Road. And on these three parcels, which are 40 acres each, so 120 acres total, the applicant is requesting the campground. And so I'm just going to read from the applicant's narrative, just a quick excerpt from it. The applicant is on the line if you have any questions for him as well. So his narrative says, "The Sun Plaza Glamping Project is a luxury camping or glamping development. And it's three, those three separate parcels, the project will be designed and constructed in phases. The first phase development will occur on 50334015, I believe it's the southernmost parcel, and will consist of 50 glamping tents." So each of these little units are the tents. An approximately 8,400 square foot reception tent, which I believe is here. An office auxiliary building, I believe that's here. A barbecue and kitchen area, a storage container, a fire pit, a musical performance stage, which I'm not sure where that is on this site plan. And grilling areas located throughout the campground. The second phase, so this is the southern, I'm assuming that High Grove is down here, and this is the southernmost parcel of the three. And here is a dotted line showing everything north of that is in the Phase Two. So this area right here, the second phase will include an additional 50 glamping tents with grilling areas, an additional tent for staff storage, and will extend into parcel 50334014. Wifi will be provided to the camping area. Glamping tents will be accessed by compacted gravel roads able to support 42,000 GBW. Proven water will be halted on the site and stored on-site. And each site will have a hookup for water. Each glamping tent will have a toilet and a sink and will be serviced by onsite wastewater systems. You can see that they're in these sort of clusters of five tents gets one septic. So these are all the leach fields for the septic. So you can see them throughout there. And I guess this is generally what I have for the request here. There were some things that I seem to be missing. I'm not sure if maybe I just missed them somewhere. I didn't see a summary of the citizen participation plan meeting. So if that's something that Ian has, he can just email that to me if he'd like. I didn't see a neighborhood compatibility plan, which I think in this particular case, or these particular cases with the tents, with the campgrounds, that is pretty important to have at least some sort of idea of what is the plan for mitigating impact when they're directly adjacent to other residentialized on parcels. So again, I'm not sure if that's something that Ian has, or it probably would not be that difficult or time consuming for them to create. They didn't have, so this High Grove Road is not a county maintained road. And so the requirements for the campgrounds are that it's either on a county maintained road or a waiver with five criteria. Basically, the applicant needs to justify the waiver with these five criteria. And I'd like to see if Ian or his client could provide at least how they feel that they're going to meet the waiver criteria. Because obviously, there could be a lot of impact from this use on other users of this privately maintained road is part of the issue. And also making sure that we can maintain it to a degree that emergency services can get there. Related to that, I didn't see a fire wise plan or a subscription to High Country. That's something where we've, in the past, we've been able to kind of condition that and get it on the back end. So possibly that could happen. If we get something up front, that's always good, too. I didn't see any sort of landscaping plan. And I don't, it seems to me like this area was fairly sparse with trees. Pinyon juniper maybe is in the area, but not that many. So I think we'd have to take a look at some sort of landscaping plan. Let's see. I'm not sure where this stage is. Maybe the applicant can, maybe Ian can show us that. So I mean, obviously, I think that there's some level of impact from amplified sound and knowing whenever, maybe there's curfew for that, or definitely a decibel limit at the property line. We've usually been doing 50 decibels. That's something where staff could condition it with that. That's another item I was looking at. And I wasn't sure if, we've noticed with CDNE that they've done TIA's for these things up front sometimes. We're not sure if that was something that they were going to do up front, or possibly that could be conditioned as well. And the last item I kind of wrote down here is that I believe there's a lot of cattle grazing in the area. So just to understand, there might be existing fencing, or if they want to have fencing, I think we'd like it to be wildlife friendly. So that's all I really have. Do we have comments from the commission? So it's 100 units altogether and 120 acres. Okay. Did you want to hear from Ian as far as some of the items that I mentioned?
Hey, Ian, any clarity on any of those items that Zach mentioned? Your TIA, neighborhood compatibility, neighborhood meeting, landscape?
Yeah. So the neighborhood meeting is actually, because of the closing date on the property, we had to kind of accelerate our schedule. The neighborhood meeting is scheduled in, it's going to be in two days. We have eight people interested in attending. So certainly after that's done, I'll write up a narrative on what they have to say and shoot that over to you. And we had at least one person who wasn't able to, didn't have the technology to do a WebEx meeting. So I'm just going to have a phone call with her and figure out, you know, what their questions or concerns are. Neighborhood compatibility plan, we're definitely coming up with that. High Grove, while it's not maintained by the county, that was dedicated right away. And it's insufficient width and surfacing. So that's a conversation that I'm going to have with the emergency service provider as we're getting that set up, which we are working on, to just make sure that's satisfactory. And I'm pretty sure he will say it is. TIA, definitely something I can get you over. That's just going to be a traffic impact statement. And then that'll kind of be up to you guys to consider whether or not you want a full traffic impact analysis or not.
Hey, just please CC John Call when you send that.
Yeah, absolutely. No problem. Landscape, yeah, like, so they have, they really want to do some neat things with the landscape. I'm pretty excited about this project because I think they want to do some cool things like the performance stage, that was kind of a late addition, so it didn't make it on here. They do, you know, and they're very flexible, you know, we're excited to hear your guys' input and see what's going to be feasible and not, from your perspective. But anyways, yeah, landscaping, they want to do some cool things with landscaping. It's kind of tough out there. Right now, like the site, like you said, is not very vegetated. But wildlife friendly fencing, you know, that certainly won't be an issue.
Let's see. I just want to make sure that we're getting all these things. And obviously, we'll be in touch, too. What about, are you able to make a little, or maybe I missed it, was there a little write-up on at least justifying the waiver for the county maintained road?
There was not. No, I don't believe there was. I'll get that over to you, though. Like I said, it's sufficient width and surfacing. So I think I can make that justification, especially with a letter from the emergency service provider.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, yeah, identifying where a outdoor performance stage goes, I think, would definitely be key for the, you know, for when we get to hearing, when Zach does his staff report, and a landscape plan would be very helpful as well. Just, because I doubt, you know, frontage-wise, you'll be going all the way with the landscape ordinance required. So just demonstrating what the landscape concept is, I think, probably pretty helpful.
Exactly. And we're trying to engage with a landscape architect right now, even though it's, you know, it's still fairly early, just because we want to do something nice. So that, you know, having something done very utilitarian by me, so.
Cool. Ian, I have another question. What are these symbols on the map?
Oh, those are, so that's for the, that's for the test holes for the wastewater system. So you can just kind of ignore those. That went straight to the excavator because we're, yeah. So right now, how the wastewater systems are shown, it's very conservative because we don't have actual soil state out there, but we're working on that as well.
Fair enough.
Okay, I guess that's about it. Thanks, Ian.
Thank you, Zach.
Any commissioners, any questions of Ian?
Yes, a couple of things. This is Commissioner Best. First of all, I noticed that in one of the cases we have tonight, the fire department said that the road was appropriate and therefore supported the waiver. So that might be a good way to go, get a fire department official to take a look at that road and confirm to us that it's okay. And the other thing might be a curfew for this, if we're going to have any performances, we certainly want to think about that.
Thank you.
I'd like to add one comment on that also. This is Commissioner Ruggles. I know we have gone with 50 DVA at the property line limits in a number of cases so far. But I think the applicant should be very well aware of the fact that we're very sparse vegetation in that area, that that would be, that's going to be a very difficult criteria to meet in that area. So just be aware of that. Ambient sound levels, even in the ponderosa forest here, and I've taken some recently, tend to run around 30 DVA. So it may be along those lines out there. So what you add to that is going to complicate the issue a little bit. And they may want to talk to an acoustic engineer about what they could do to meet a requirement like 50 DVA.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, planning and zoning commissioners, Ian? Okay, thank you. Well, Chair Antares, that is the two cases for public hearing next month. Your hearing will be on July 29. I'm going to run through your agenda here on the department update. Item one, just to let you all know that the county is still working on operational decisions with respect to the pandemic and social distancing. The county manager published a county reentry plan, which gives a process, it's actually a four-phase process, to open county facilities to the public. I've been speaking with two of the commissioners about this. We've certainly had expressions from the commissioners that feeling that applicants and the public are better served with an in-person, with an in-person meeting. And I think many people agree with those ideas, that an in-person meeting captures some things that you don't, you just can't get over this technology. So if you'd like a copy of that four-phase county reentry plan, I'd be happy to forward one to you. It's a PDF, not too long. I can tell you, as of right now, I would foresee that in one month, seeing the numbers in the county and seeing the numbers in the state of Arizona, I would not anticipate that we would have made it all the way through all four phases by next month's hearing in order to have an in-person, an in-person meeting. Still looking at no more than 10 people in one room at one time. So that's going to be pretty tough. And if you'd like to look at some of the details on that reentry plan, the concept of successive weeks of downward trending new cases, so kind of a downward trend on the curve for successive weeks, and are moved from one phase to the next. And we've got a little bit of ways to go. So I think we can safely say that July's meeting, per county reentry plan and county guidance, and of course, the reentry plan was approved by the board supervisors, we anticipate that the July meeting will definitely be on this format again. Any questions about that of staff? And would anyone, any commissioners like me to send them a copy of that plan?
Commissioner Best, yeah, I would like a copy of the plan. And I'd also like to comment that I agree 100% that in-person meetings are better. But there are circumstances, and we've discussed this before, where people in Page or Fredonia, you know, remote areas might appreciate an opportunity to do a remote access. So I'm sure the supervisors are looking at the same issue, since they're doing the same type of meeting. But I think that's a conversation we ought to have.
Absolutely.
One thing that I'd like to add to this, if possible, I have no problem pulling up the county manager's plan of this. I will agree with everyone so far that person-to-person is by far the best way to do this. I feel like I've had my hands behind my back doing things online. But I also have one other consideration, because I have one person at home here who is at the absolute top of the most at-risk category in this. So I'm just going to have to go with it and see where we are here as things proceed. So it may be difficult, but I'll try out a way to work with it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Any other commissioners' comments on the county reopening plan, reentry plan? All right, thanks. Just another update, Commissioner Ruggles and Clifford would be able to let you know that the Doni Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan is making good progress. Still meeting the second Thursday of the month. They are still in a phase at this point of receiving presentations from county and other agency experts. I believe this next month, on their agenda, we are hoping to have the new owners of Horstman's Watch giving a presentation. That's going to be an interesting one. Should be wrapping up presentations to give background information within the next, certainly within the next two months, and then moving into visioning process, what the updated vision for that area plan is, and then moving into policy updates. So the process is going well. Any questions on the Doni Park Area Plan? All right. Our other long-range planning initiative at this point in time is the renewable energy ordinance. And a couple of you all are involved in assisting with that. If you look at your study session agenda, we have a website address here, the Conveo website that the county uses. We can post documents there up for review. It's very effective for area plans. We used it successfully for the Belmont Area Plan. The county used it for the Parks and Rec Master Plan Update. And we have the draft Renewable Energy Ordinance section up there now. So you can look at your study session agenda for that link and review it if you'd like. There will be a work session with the board, is now being confirmed for August 25th, on the, on, an update to them on the process for the renewable energy ordinance. Any questions about the renewable energy?
Yes, Melissa, if I could ask that? Could you hear me?
Can hear you now.
Okay, great. Yeah, I would just like to point out that the Conveo website, that document is password protected. Currently, it's under review by the technical advisory group. So we will get that out to the rest of the advisory groups when we're done with that initial review.
Okay, thank you, Melissa.
Thanks.
After that, if you look at your study session agenda, just wanted to let you all know that we are still in the process of recruiting for the compliance manager. That was Elizabeth Richardson's position. She moved up to a very good position in the Health Department. And we're also currently recruiting for the chief building official. Adam Hicks remains our interim chief building official. So we should be scheduling interviews for both of those positions within the next couple of weeks. Hope to have some updates for you on those positions next month. And it'll be good to get them filled. Any questions about any of our staffing? All right. Wanted to let you know that on June 9, the board approved Zone Change 2001. That was the Horstman Zone Change from G to AR5 on Wapiti Trail. And the board is scheduled to hear Zone Change 2005. That will be the Watson Zone Change from AR2.5 to CG10,000 in Timberline. You heard this last month. We now have that confirmed as going to the board on August 11. So after the board's July break, August 11, the board will hear that zone change. Any questions on board hearings? We are doing fantastic. Chair Antares, that will bring us up to the commission and staff roundtable. Staff does not have anything that we intend to discuss. Do any of the commissioners have anything? We've got three minutes here till your public hearing agenda starts. So is there anything that, within a couple of minutes here, the staff want to discuss as part of our roundtable? All right. Well, Chair Antares, with that, that would be your study session. Got a couple of minutes here till we move into your public hearing agenda. I'll let you know that for item one, for Pledge of Allegiance, we do have a fluttering American flag that will come up on the screen for Pledge of Allegiance. And beyond that, we can move into the public hearings. Have a good agenda, five items. And we're already seeing that we have several guests, some applicants, some agents, and other members of the public who will be involved in this meeting. We've got 21 people on this meeting as of right now. So certainly getting some participation. So Chair Antares, any questions as we prep to go into public hearing here in two minutes?
No, thank you, Mr. McBealy. I don't have any questions or any roundtable comments because there is a five-item agenda tonight. And you and Mr. Schwartz are probably going to be a little bit more familiar with perhaps what guest goes with what agenda item. So if you guys would kind of help me out tonight so we can, you know, move forward with this as orderly as possible.
Absolutely, absolutely. We will do that.
Okay.
And we have planning staff Rachel Davis with us this evening as well, making a, we've been keeping Rachel very busy in digitizing all of our processes, getting all of our processes to where our customers can be served completely online, which was great timing in this day and age of our buildings being closed and public and social distancing. And it's functioning very well. So anyone, any of you all who have gone to our website and seen our portal, our portal is now all things that you can get any and all permits, make code enforcement requests, do anything you want to, and all goes straight to the portal. And the system's working well. It's been a lot of work. But you know, it's going to serve the public better. And I can tell you, anything good is coming out of this pandemic. It's tools like this that's forcing us to make better use of these tools and improve them for better access to the public.
Yeah. Mr. McBealy, I'm going to have to agree with you because we have personally used the online items that Rachel Davis has put together. She's done a great job, and it really does work well. So anyway, I'm looking at my watch and it says 5:30 sharp. So Mr. McBealy, shall we call this meeting to order?
Absolutely, Chair Antares.
All right, okay. Welcome to the June meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative, they address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. We ask that your comments be limited to five minutes or less. Comments must be relative, relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. No additional public comments may be made unless requested by a commissioner. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plot approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are bound All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have 15 days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. And due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. And thank you for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. McNeely, would you need us, please?
Thank you, Chair Ontiveros. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNeely. I would like to ask, there are two, looking at my list of participants, there are two participants down at the bottom. I don't know who that is, but could we please ask them to mute?
Okay, yes. And if anyone on this, on this meeting didn't hear Chairwoman Ontiveros, please go ahead and mute your, please mute your microphones. If you're going to speak on an item, you can unmute and join in on an item. And you can use the, by unmuting, we will know that you're wanting to speak.
Yes, this is, this is Saad. Are those folks calling in on phones, and do they have that capacity to mute? Because what I'm seeing here, I'm seeing phone numbers.
Yeah, we can mute them.
But then how would they alert you to unmute them?
We can, we can unmute when we ask to see if there's anyone at that number who's wanting to speak on anything, or anyone from the public to speak.
Okay, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to go with no cameras for this or not.
So we would recommend, Commissioner Ruggles, Chair Ontiveros, that we continue to go with the no cameras. Our experience has been, Zach and I have pretty good, have very, very good internet here at a county facility. But just generally speaking, most people's home internet is, they're going to have better bandwidth. They're going to be able to hear and see better if their camera is off.
Yes, and Mr. McNeely, I concur with that. Let's do leave the cameras off. And we have had one other person join us. The last two digits of the phone number look like they're 58. So if that person can hear me, would you please mute on, would you please mute? And moving on, let's go ahead and proceed. The second item on the agenda is the approval of the May 27, 2020 minutes. I'll have a motion, I'll accept a motion if there are no corrections.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the May 27, 2020 meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Clifford and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of the May 27, 2020 meetings. All those in favor, there goes the roll call. Commissioner Burton.
Aye.
Yes, I concur.
Okay, Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner, let's see, I already had Commissioner Clifford. I already had you, I believe. No, Commissioner Clifford, you need to vote.
Aye.
Oh, this is, this is fun. And this is Chairwoman Ontiveros. I also vote aye. So the motion for approval of the minutes passes unanimously. Moving on to the public hearings, the first case is case number CUP 20-026.
Thank you, Commissioner Ontiveros. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, this is Rachel Davis with Planning and Zoning, and this is case number CUP 20026. Let me go ahead and share my screen. I have a PowerPoint presentation prepared. I'm sorry, I'm sharing the wrong thing here. Bear with me. I apologize. Okay. So this is case number CUP 20026, and it's a request for a conditional use permit for a 40-foot metal storage container. And the applicants are Bob and Lou Sparks. The property is located at 9645 Stardust Trail in Doni Park, parcel number 30118005C. It is zoned AR2.5, which is agricultural residential with a 2.5-acre minimum lot size. The parcel is slightly undersized, but considered legal non-conforming. This is a map showing the vicinity of the property. It is surrounded by similarly zoned residential properties in Doni Park. And this is the submitted site plan for the property. And while the applicants were going through a building permit process with us, it was noted that the 40-foot shipping container had already been installed on the property. And so the applicants immediately began working with planning staff on a conditional use permit for the container. Okay, this is a photo of the container already on the site, and the applicants have indicated that they are willing to paint it. There are four findings of fact that the commission must make in order to approve a conditional use permit. And staff is able to make these findings, and it recommends that the commission approve case number CUP 20026 with the seven conditions listed within the staff report. And I am happy to take any questions from the commission at this time.
Okay, Ms. Davis, I'm not seeing any. So is the applicant or the applicant's representative joining us this evening? Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Best, did you have a question from Ms. Davis?
Yes, my only question is, you know, I think in some previous cases, we have included a condition about making, getting things that are in the yard that look a little disheveled into the storage container and maintaining a clean yard as a condition of having a larger storage container. I didn't see anything like that in the conditions. Is that an issue in this case? Is there stuff outside that ought to be stored inside for this general neighborhood cleanliness?
Commissioner Best, thank you for that question. At this time, staff has not seen anything substantial. The applicant has purchased this container in order to store their personal effects from their yard. And so I believe that that desire of yard cleanliness will be met by these applicants and by this, by the conditions that are already there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'll ask again, is the applicant or the applicant's representative joining us this evening? Okay, Mr. McNeely, are you seeing them, or Ms. Davis, are you seeing them?
We are not seeing anyone, Chair Ontiveros. Are you seeing, are you aware of anyone? Are you recognizing any of the phone numbers as being an applicant?
I am not, but I was going to look it up and see if they were calling in from one of their numbers.
Hey, Marty, as running the meeting, if you could unmute, we're trying to unmute the phone numbers. So Marty Hernandez, if you could please, as you're the one who's the meeting operator, if you could, if you could please unmute the phone numbers, the three phone numbers we're seeing under the people attending. Is that possible?
Okay, I'm checking on that.
When we go to unmute, it's just grayed out.
And Commissioner Ontiveros, I'm looking up the applicant's phone number. I'm not seeing one matching with any of the phone numbers that are currently in our group.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Davis. This seems like a very straightforward application. So since we don't, since we seemingly do not have an applicant, we're going to go ahead and move into commission discussion. So Commissioner Burton, comments?
No, not really. I think as long as they're willing to paint it earth tone, I don't see any problem with it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Meyer?
Yes, I'm in agreement, provided it blends in with the aesthetics around the area, it should be fine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Best?
I can support this. I think it makes sense. And I can make the findings.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ruggles?
Great. Having read the analysis and being somewhat familiar with the area too, I can make the findings. I believe that the conditions do require painting to give a color that will blend in with the surroundings. In that case, probably going to preserve the color. So I am in favor of this CUP.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Walters?
I can support this. Thank you.
Okay, then Commissioner Clifford?
I can support this, and I actually live just down the street from this house. And even if they painted to match the colors of the house, because they did a lot of work on that, it would blend in, and you wouldn't even see it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Clifford, for those comments. And I also can make the findings. I believe it's just very straightforward. So with that, I will accept a motion for approval, please.
Okay, I'll go forward with that. I'd like to make a motion for approval of CUP 20-026, seven conditions as listed in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Okay, I think, I think if I understood correctly, I've got a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Clifford. All of those in favor, here's the roll call. Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Okay, and this is Commissioner Ontiveros, and I also vote aye. So case number CUP 20026 passes unanimously. The second item on the agenda is case number SUB 20004, SUB 20005, and ZC 20004.
Thank you, Chair Ontiveros. This is Zach Schwartz with Planning Staff. And this is cases SUB 20004, SUB 20005, and ZC 20004. These are requests for final plat amendments for the North Lodge subdivision and the Pinewood Unit 15 subdivision, and a zone change from the RS 10,000, that's residential, single-family, 10,000 square foot parcel size minimum zone, to the RS 6,000, the same but with a 6,000 square foot minimum parcel size zone, to accommodate a moved property line between one lot in each of those two subdivisions. So I have up here for you a vicinity map where you can see, this is the Mon's Park area, of course. Not too far north of the interchange for Pine Wood Boulevard and I-17 is where these two subdivisions lie. So we have North Lodge on kind of the western side, Pine Wood on the eastern side, the Unit 15, and the two parcels are right there. Here's kind of a zoomed-in map, so you can see everything on the North Lodge plat is the RS 10,000 zone, and everything in the Pine Wood 15 plat is the RS 6,000 zone. So the subject properties are located at 265 Barnwood Trail and 17410 Lodge Hole Place in Mon's Park area. And the parcel sizes are, for the one labeled Baker here on the North Lodge plat, it is 15,840 square feet. And the one labeled Harvey here is 6,983 square feet approximately. The applicant is on the line with us today. It's the surveyor Urban Bister out of Springfield, Utah. And the owners of the properties are Paul and Sandra Baker for the North Lodge piece out of Phoenix, Arizona, and Michael Harvey out of Glendale, Arizona, is the lot that's in Pine Wood Unit 15. There's a home on each of these properties, and all the surrounding properties are also occupied with single-family residences in either those RS 10,000 or 6,000 zones, depending on the plat. So I did take some pictures. This is actually from a small deck on the Harvey parcel, the Pine Wood lot. And the parcel boundary right now is approximately where, I've kind of shown this white arrow here. As you can see, it sort of bisects this fire pit area there. And here's looking in the opposite direction down to that fire pit area. You can see that there's a decent amount of topography here. This is looking down the property line from the southern corner of both lots, looking down, and you can see that Pine Wood property. For some background on this request, the owner of the Pine Wood plat, Harvey, purchased the property, the subject property, in 2019 and determined that the existing pavement and fire pit areas down here were partially located across the property line onto the North Lodge lot. And the applicant has requested the plat amendments in order to reconfigure the property so that these improvements would be located entirely on the Pine Wood lot. So you're looking at, this again is the current boundary line between the two subdivisions. And Harvey parcel is looking to take on this triangle here so that all these improvements are on the Harvey parcel. And that requires also that this triangle area changes from the RS 10,000 zone to the RS 6,000 zone to meet the rest of the zoning that's on the Pine Wood plat. So for this request, there are four findings of fact that the Planning and Zoning Commission has to make in order to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors. One is that the change is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan and this ordinance, and staff is able to make that. The response is that there are no applicable goals and policies of the comprehensive plan for such a small corrective plat amendment issue and associated zone change. But the change is consistent with the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance requirements. The second finding is that the change will not be detrimental to public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and welfare. And staff's response to that is that the plat amendments and zone change will not only not have any detriment, but they also promote the comfort and the convenience of the property owners for the request. The third finding is that the change will not adversely affect the established character of the surrounding neighborhood, nor be detrimental to adjacent properties. Staff is able to make that finding. There shouldn't be any effect. And it's got a similar response to finding number four, that the change will not adversely affect the established character of the neighborhood. It shouldn't have any effect at all. So with that, staff is recommending that the Planning and Zoning Commission make a recommendation for approval of cases SUB 20004 and 20005, subject to the one condition of the staff report, and also for case ZC 20004. And these need to be done in separate motions. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions from the commission at this time.
Okay, Mr. Schwartz, I am not seeing that there are any questions. So I will Schwartz, I am not seeing that there are any questions, so I will ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative is present with us this evening.
They are on the line. I see that they're muted. Urban, can you hear us? Let me see if I can unmute them.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I'm here present.
Okay, thank you. Would you please state your name and address for the record, and address the Commission on anything that you would like to bring to their attention?
My name is Urban P. Visser. I'm a professional land surveyor, real estate and data area. I'm bringing up Flagstaff, also the largest building.
Okay, you're echoing a little bit. Did you state your address?
So my address for this project, 2543 South Shady Oak, Flagstaff, 800.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Visser. Do you have any comments that you would like to make to the Commission this evening?
Unless they have any question, the only issue we have an improvement and reason for the adjustment in the flat.
Okay, have you read the staff report, and do you agree with the conditions contained therein?
I don't think I have, unless it was sent a while back, I may have read it. Yes, I did.
Okay, so just to confirm, you have read the staff report, and you do agree with the conditions?
I am aware of some.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Visser. Any further comments before we move to commission discussion?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for Mr. Visser? Okay.
I have one request.
Okay, who? Okay, Commissioner Walters, what do you got?
Mr. Visser, after we get off of here, would you please mute your speaker and your camera?
Now?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. Is there anyone?
We have two phone numbers, one that ends in 58 and one's that ends in 56. Let's create a feedback. We need to mute those two.
Okay, and I do agree with that, because there was quite a bit of feedback. Mr. McNeely, here's where I'm going to need your help. Do you see anyone in the public that wishes to address the Commission tonight on this case, on these cases?
Chair Ontiveros, we are not seeing anyone right now. If anyone listening is one of the phone users, and you are muted, and you want to speak on this item, you will need to hit star six on your phone in order to unmute yourself. So if any one of the phone numbers participating in this meeting would like to speak as a member of the public on this case, please right now hit star six, and we will see your number come unmuted. So Chair Ontiveros, give them a second here and see if anybody unmutes.
Okay. Mr. McNeely, I'm thinking that you could probably see the participant SUB-20-004, that would undoubtedly be tied to this case. I do not see them unmuting, nor anyone else at this point.
All right, same, yeah, same for, thank you, and I'm seeing, yeah, that is this case. So guess who is here for SUB 20-004? If you'd like to speak on this, please unmute from your phone by hitting star six. Okay, yeah, I'm not seeing any movement on any of those, Chair Ontiveros.
Okay, thank you, and I wasn't either. Then seeing that we're going to go ahead and move to commission discussion, Commissioner Burton, thoughts, comments, please?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Commissioner Meyer?
I really have no issue on this proposal. I can support it.
Okay, Commissioner Best?
Well, I think this is a very complicated handshake over the back fence between two neighbors, and I'm glad they worked it out. It is quite complicated, but I can certainly support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruggles?
I can definitely make the findings after reading a rather thorough analysis that went with this, so I am definitely in favor of the everything here, which will take a separate motion for each one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Walters?
I can support this. I agree. I think this is good that they're working it out. I have one thing, Mr. Visser, please turn off your camera.
Okay, Commissioner Clifford?
I can make the findings. It's a good neighborhood thing, and everybody's working together.
Okay, thank you. And this is Commissioner Ontiveros, and I concur with the other Commissioners' comments. This was a lot of work for seemingly a very small detail, but kudos to all of the neighbors on this. Great example of working together in the neighborhood. So with that, I'm going to accept, I'm going to need three separate motions, and so I will go ahead and accept the motion in a second, and then we'll do the roll call.
Okay, I guess I'll proceed to this if you'd like.
Please.
First, I would like to make a motion for approval of SUB-20-004 with the one condition specified by staff. And I think we need a second and act on that separately.
Yeah, we do. I just need someone to second for me.
I'll second that.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Clifford for approval of SUB 20-004. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
This is Commissioner Ontiveros. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. Let's move to the second motion for SUB 2005.
Okay, I'll do that one too. A motion for approval of SUB-2005 with the one condition specified by staff.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Burton for approval of SUB 20-005. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
And then, this is Commissioner Ontiveros. I also vote aye. SUB 20-005 passes unanimously, and now can I please have a motion in a second on these zone change?
Okay, I'll go for it. I would like to make a motion for approval of ZC 20-004.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion for approval to the Board of Supervisors for ZC 20-004. All in favor, say aye. Commissioner?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ontiveros, aye. Motion for ZC 20-004 for approval to the Board of Supervisors passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Best. Could I make a point of order, please?
Please.
I just want to make sure that somebody on staff knows who the three phone numbers are, and that we have a system for identifying them, and make sure that we call them at the proper time. I know we're kind of making this up as we go along, but I don't want to have anybody call in and wait and be missed.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best, and I do think that all of us are concerned about that, and that is why I asked Mr. McNeely to help out on this, to make sure that exactly what you spoke about does not happen, because I think that I can speak for all of us, that we all want public participation, and we don't want to miss the meeting.
So now we have a new person, so I mean, I would even say if we have to stop the meeting for 20 seconds, get a name, and identify people, if it has to be that crudely done, I think we should do it.
Okay, Mr. McNeely, would you please offer some input on how we're going to, on that?
Sure. So Chair Ontiveros, we have already offered for anyone listening who is muted that on phones, they can simply hit star six and unmute themselves and identify themselves. Likewise, staff here can call these applicants from our phones and see if we can get a response as to who the individual is at that number.
Okay, thank you, and I know we can, we're all trying our best here, and that's really the best that we can do. So let's move on to case, the third item on the agenda, which is case number SUB 20-008.
So Chair Ontiveros, that will be Bob Short is managing this case. Bob, sub 2008, the Tall Tales.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Bob.
Can you hear me? Right. Are you able to see the PowerPoint on the screen?
I can see it. I can see it, Mr. Short.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. This case is the Tall Tales Ranch subdivision, preliminary plat. In this case, property owner is 7486 Star House LLC of Flagstaff. The applicant is Mike Palmer of Flagstaff, Arizona. Also serving as the applicant is Ian Braun, and that's listed on your agenda, however, he's more representative in this case. He's from Civil Engineering Design of Flagstaff, Arizona. The location of the property is on Tall Tales Ranch Road, one mile west of North Coast, Nino Road, in the interchange, whoops, did that go off? Interchange on Interstate 40. The zoning is AR5 agricultural residential five-acre minimum parcel size, and the size of the property is 111.02 acres. The request is for preliminary plat approval of a 22-lot subdivision. This subdivision's already zoned, so no zone change is required. Sorry, I'm having a bit of trouble getting my PowerPoint to move forward.
It's okay, Mr. Short. We're all working through this together, so.
It works pretty well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this is a vicinity map showing the subject property, and you can see it's out south of Interstate 40. This corridor along here is Walnut Creek Canyon National Monument. Subject property is just a few hundred feet from that. It is back in the trees, so you really can't see it from the road or anything. This is Cos Nino exit over here, and you can see this AR5 zone property adjacent to a 40-acre property. And this is an aerial photo showing the subject property. Again, there's Walnut Creek Canyon National Monument. It's surrounded by national forest, Coquigny National Forest, on all three sides here. It just kind of sticks out into the forest. And this is the preliminary plat. So the proposal is to get access off of Tall Tales Ranch Road, and then build a new road down here, a very long cul-de-sac, and to the end, with this, also this other access easement going down to provide access to these three lots. This is a very long cul-de-sac, but in our new subdivision ordinance, since it's not a private, it's not a public road, it is a private road, waivers are not required for that. And this is a cross-section of the public access easement. The entire thing is 60 feet wide with two 12-foot travel lanes and two-foot unpaid shoulders on each side. As I said, this is a private street. And there is quite a bit of floodplain on the property, and this is a floodplain map done by the engineering firm that's working with them. You can see the floodplain in blue. It still leaves plenty of space at the front of the properties, or on almost all of the properties for a nice site for a house, since these are five-acre lots. I'll look at a little bit of background here. The subject property's basically been ranching, used for ranching for a long time. They also have leased area on the national forest adjacent to that. The owners retained, want to retain 40 acres sort of north of this parcel, and that is to allow them to keep doing the ranching that they're doing right now. Now, the applicant has indicated concerns about five different conditions, and that was given to us just shortly last week, just shortly after they got the staff report. So I want to go over those, and these are kind of an important way of kind of looking at the subdivision as a whole. Anyway, I do have to say that Ian is here to represent the applicant, but neither Ian or I have heard from them, and we haven't gotten specifics about what exactly they would like to change. We wanted to talk to them and find out. So I'm just going to go through these and kind of present them to the Commission, and let you decide if you would like to make changes to them. So the first one is for wildlife-friendly fencing. This is a very common condition for subdivisions, as you know. It just simply requires wildlife-friendly fencing around the subject property, and also any new fencing on the property for the parcels or lots once they get created. Each individual property owner would also use wildlife fencing. And we have also required quite a bit of flexibility in this one for gardens and dog runs and those kinds of things. So it is a pretty flexible condition overall. I wanted to show you what that looks like. You've seen this before, most of you have. The primary thing is to have a smooth wire on top, a smooth wire on bottom, and that minimum gaps that are in there, that minimum gap of 20 inches at the bottom, that's to allow antelope to go through, go under. They like to climb, go under fences, where elk and deer like to jump over fences. So this is to keep them from getting hooked up in a fence if they do try to go over or under. And this is one of the issues with the applicant. This is, this shows the wildlife-friendly, or the fencing that is existing on the subject property. You can tell that it is in some places a little bit, looks like it needs a little bit of work in some places. This is a three-mile-long fence, so the applicant would have to replace the top wire and the bottom wire on this fence, and probably do some other work as well. So that is one of the things I think the applicant was not happy about, the expense of doing that for three miles. Staff does not know exactly what the cost of that would be. I should also point out that fencing is not required, so fencing can also be removed. And I just wanted to show you a couple of some of the policies in the comp plan that deal with wildlife-friendly fencing, and there are several in there, and these are some of them. They're also listed in your staff report. This is another condition. This came from the county wildlife planner. I'll just read it to you. It says, "The CCNRs shall limit the use of pesticides and herbicides to protect sensitive habitat with coordination from the county wildlife planner." I made that change on this condition because it was a little bit vague as written, and I wanted to provide a little bit more direction for the applicant once they put this into the CCNRs. There is support in the comp plan for this, although it is very... There is support in the comp plan for this, although it is very broad support based more on protecting aquatic species. There isn't anything specific in the comp plan, any policies about, that I could find, also about pesticides and herbicides. And this is condition ten. This is something you have seen before a few times as well, basically designed to protect slopes over twenty-five percent. And part of the justification for that is in the subdivision ordinance. It defines areas on parcels with slopes greater than twenty-five percent as not buildable. So that is the reason that we typically put this in. Then there's also some policies in the comp plan, there's one policy that talks about that as well. And that's basically all it says is protect slopes over twenty-five percent. Now, I wanted you to see this slopes map, this is in your packet as well. But I do have to say there are very few slopes here over twenty-five percent. If you see the purple here, this is, those are slopes over twenty-five percent. The red are, you know, represents slopes fifteen to twenty-five percent. So you can see some smaller slopes up in here, very, very little at all. And staff and I'll be worried about that. And this, there is one little piece here, it's not very significant either. So this would, I think, all this condition would entail is that you created an easement where this slope is on lot eleven down here. And staff would have to say that that's such a small area slope that I don't think that would be important either. We could actually move that condition if the Commission felt that was necessary. This is an important condition, this is condition number twelve. And like I said, the applicant hasn't given any specifics about what they don't like about these conditions. So I just wanted to go over these and show you what they are. Some of these would be important as anyway. The site is very near Walnut Canyon National Monument and there are archaeological artifacts on the site. In fact, every time staff stopped in on during their site visit, looked down the ground, there's pottery shards, I think in four different places we stopped. So definitely there are some artifacts there. I did call Walnut Canyon National Monument and talked to them, well, actually called, I did not talk to them. I left messages with the cultural resources department there. I did not receive any calls back from that. I, they're also notified of the subdivision technical advisory committee meeting and we did not get any comments from them at all on this. Because this is kind of a difficult thing for such a relatively small development. We did, we do just happen to have someone on our staff who has a lot of experience in archaeology. And I provided those credentials for you in the staff report to show you what kind of experience he had. And this person volunteered to go out to the site, look around, see what he saw, you know, see what he could see. And he did write a very short report that's in your staff report. And he also suggested some protection measures and that's where we got this condition, condition number twelve. And as you see at the bottom, these are a couple of the pottery shards that we found on that one visit. And I'll just read this to you, this is basically the applicant should exercise extra caution and monitoring when excavating the site during construction. If any structures or human remains are encountered during excavation, work should stop immediately and the state historic preservation officer should be contacted to determine the mitigation strategy. These provisions shall be applied to any construction activity in the subdivision and included in the C C N Rs. So in terms of human remains, I believe that is a law and I think Commissioner Best, maybe some others could verify that for us. But that is a, that is a law that if you find human remains, you do have to contact shippo. And then, but for structures, that's a little bit different. However, as you can see, these are five acre parcels, so if they did happen to find structures, these ancient structures on a lot, they could likely just move to a different building site and avoid that structure. So there is quite a bit of support in the comprehensive plan for cultural resource protection here. Here's three of those different policies in there, so there is quite a bit of support for that. And then I want to talk about a trail easement. The Commission has often required trail easements when subdivisions are adjacent to national forest. It just provides a way for people to get to the national forest more easily. And it also, in this case, most of the lots, in fact, there are only two lots in this entire subdivision that don't have access to the national forest from the back of the property. But if you do provide these trail easements, then they provide one connection rather than many connections from all of the lots. And of course, people can also just simply go out the back of their lot anyway, whether there's a trail connection or not. But I have, my experience has been that there have been less of those if a trail easement has been provided. Now, I want to point out that neither one of these actually provides legal access to the national forest. And because it's been so difficult, it literally requires an act of Congress to get access to the national forest. Staff has gone ahead and asked the applicants to put those in and the Commission has approved those. I did contact the Forest Service, had a little bit of conversation about this with them. However, they let me know today that they have not gotten any, they have not gotten any comments back. They kind of, you know, sent the message out to different personnel within the national forest and they said they really didn't have any comment on that, on this at this point. So I want to show you a map of the subdivision kind of close up. These two parcels in the middle right here, sixteen and seventeen, they are the only ones that wouldn't have any access to the national forest. The others would and I wanted to show you this this condition as well. I did change it up a little to make it more flexible, I had it at a specific location and I would recommend changing that to just being a roadway. I think one of the issues with the owner was that they wanted to build their house on one of these lots, seven, eight or nine. I believe that's true, I'm not, I'm not sure about that. But I wanted to make sure that this is flexible. And I also indicate in the condition that this is just simply a dirt path out to the forest to make it simple without, you know, a lot of paving or a lot of expense. I think in some cases, just a regular trail dirt path is the best. If the Commission doesn't agree with that, we can certainly think of other standards to come up with. And this is some support in the comp plan for these types of trail easements, or I should say for connections to the national forest. There are, there is quite a bit of this in here. It, I mean, there are just several and I actually took out a lot of the policies because I had way too many in here, they are in your staff report. But there definitely is a lot of support in the comprehensive plan for this. And I also wanted to point out this policy. This is a land use and growth policy. It says the county encourages and supports property owners in the development of flatted subdivisions rather than lot splits and seeks to update the subdivision ordinance to help incentivize design that is consistent with the comprehensive plan and area plans. So I think my point here is that we really want to see people do subdivisions and we want to help them and support them and work with them on any issues that they might have because that's a lot better outcome than to split up this property into lot splits. In terms of citizen participation, neighbors within a thousand feet of the subject property were notified of the proposed subdivision and invited to a virtual meeting on May ninth. No one attended the meeting or provided comments and staff has not received any comments on this subdivision. It is in a pretty isolated location. And these are the findings for preliminary plat, those have been addressed in the staff report as always. We can talk about any of those, if the Commission has questions. And with that, staff recommends the Commission provides a recommendation that the Board of Supervisors approve S U B twenty zero eight with the conditions in the staff report. And with that, I'll take any questions from the Commission.
Okay, Mr. Short, just for clarification, in the archaeological condition, I believe you stated it was number twelve when you were talking about it right now. I hope I may be confused here, but I think on page thirteen of your staff report, it's addressed in number, let's see, in number ten, where it says the applicant shall exercise extra caution and monitoring when excavating. Whether it be ten or twelve. My question is, in the second sentence where it says if any structures or human remains are encountered during excavation, work should. Should the word should be changed to shall? And also continuing on in that sentence and the state historic preservation officer should, should that be shall, what are your thoughts on that? Because there's a huge difference in enforcement between those two words.
Madam Chair, I think you are correct about that and also on the numbering, I apologize for that. I did get the numbering mixed up a little bit. But in either case, I think that's, that's a good way to do that. I think I'd taken the staff who had looked at this as a word's almost verbatim, but I think that's a good change to change that to shall, both of those cases.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Short. I don't have any further questions, do any of the Commissioners have questions for Mr. Short?
Yes, this is Commissioner Best. First of all, the, the roads are private, are the cul-de-sacs the proper diameter for fire? For the fire equipment, emergency equipment?
Commissioner Best, yes, they are, I did send this out to the, to the Fire District and I didn't receive any negative comments on the layout of the subdivision.
Okay. My second question is a little broader. We seem to be assuming here that we have the right to control and enforce C C N Rs on the applicant, is that true? Can we tell the applicant that you must have a C C N R that says, that reminds owners of the law that they are required to contact shippo if they find human remains?
Commissioner Best, that's, that's my understanding. We might put that, you know, put that question to the, to the county attorney's office. I think what, what we are looking at here is, we're looking at those policies, these policies right here in the comprehensive plan and trying to find a way to meet these policies, to make sure that this subdivision is consistent with these policies. In some cases, as you know, you would have a full archaeological survey, which can be quite expensive. So we tried to make that a little bit simpler. I would perhaps, Mr. McNeely or the county attorney's office can comment on that. My understanding is that we did have the right to, to require these in the C C N Rs. There are other things in there as well, there's firewise protection, there's weed mitigation and we're also looking at this herbicide and pesticide condition in there as well.
Yeah, this is, this is a more expansive step into C C N Rs than we normally take and I just want to make sure, maybe council could comment and make sure that that's appropriate. I definitely support it. But I want to make sure that we can do it and it has lasting effects because C C N Rs can be changed usually through a fairly high percentage of vote of the landowners. Could they simply do away with these C C N Rs after, after the subdivision gets going?
Commissioner Best, whenever a subdivision is approved, the final approval goes to the Board of Supervisors and the Board of Supervisors has a resolution and the resolution has these conditions in that resolution. So that's an official act of the legislative body of the county. So my understanding is that would carry some weight in the future that they would not be in compliance if, if they were to remove this from the subdivision. Now, the way I look in a practical sense, the way I look at this is that it's just kind of, you know, it's a heads up to people to, you know, take care and, you know, take care of the property and if you find something to report it, but it prevents them from having to do a lot more stuff that would be more extensive than this.
This is, this is maybe getting too much into the comment side, but we have a lot of flexibility in our subdivision ordinance now, we've added flexibility. Have you offered the applicant options that would allow them to have, say, more lots? If they set aside some of the more sensitive areas, maybe some of the areas where, I don't know if a wildlife, specific wildlife quarter has been identified. We've got a lot, lot of options now in the ordinance. This is a fairly cut and dried, just chop it up into however many parcels of all the same size. Did you go through that with the applicant?
Commissioner Best, I think in this particular case, since they do have the zoning and the zoning is very large lot zoning, and I can't, I can't answer your question as to whether there is a, an actual corridor through here. The wildlife planner, I believe, I believe Jessica is here and she can maybe answer that. But it looks like there's quite a bit of wildlife movement throughout this whole area, so that was the reason for wildlife friendly fencing. And then, in order to, for example, for cultural resources purposes, in order to set aside pieces of land that have those, we'd have to know where they are. And to do that, we would, you know, we would have to do a survey, which is something we're trying to avoid. So since it was a real low density development, you know, one unit per five acres or five acres per parcel for lot in this case, we kind of let that take care of itself in terms of the low density would reduce the impacts to these things.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lumpkin, would you please address the concerns that Mr., or excuse me, that Commissioner Best just brought forward regarding the Commission's ability to impose these, to impose conditions in the C C N Rs, please?
I'd be happy to, Chairman. It's my opinion that it is permissible, one, given the nature of the conditions having to do with possible human remains, also the identification of cultural resources present in the area and its inclusion in the area plan. And finally, because it does go to the Board of Supervisors and is passed by resolution, yeah, having the effective, effect and weight of a legislative body's decision behind it. I believe that it is appropriate and permissible for the Commission to do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lumpkin. Are there any further questions for Mr. Short from the Commissioners? Okay, seeing none, is the applicant or the applicant's representative available to speak to the Commission?
Madam Chair, yes, I am here, this is Ian Braun with C D and E Inc. My address is six one eight East Reef Route sixty-six, Flagstaff, Arizona, eight six zero zero one.
Thank you. You've heard the discussion going on, you're the applicant's representative. Mr. Short brought forth some of their concerns this evening regarding several of the, of the conditions. And generally what I do is I, well, actually all the time, I ask the applicant if they've had an opportunity to read the staff report and if they agree with the conditions that are contained. In this case, it's my understanding that the applicant is not present with us tonight, but there seem to be conditions that they may take. but there seem to be conditions that they may take issue with. Can you expound on any of that to give the commissioners a bit of further understanding?
Yes, I believe I can. As Bob said, we were provided the staff report last week, and unfortunately, the applicant can't be here tonight. They did provide me with a written summary of the recommendations that they took issue with, and I will do my best to maybe explain their position on those. And then, of course, I can answer any other questions you have. I could probably speak regarding the wildlife corridor and things like that. But if, just to go through them, I think they can mostly be summed up that they are concerned about putting encumbrances on the future lot owners as far as some of the provisions in the C C N Rs. I'll just go down the list if that's all right. Number six, regarding wildlife-friendly fencing. Their feeling on that is that this has been an operating ranch for 30-plus years with the same fencing, and they don't see the need to refence, and they don't want to bear the cost of changing the fencing over. Number seven, that's just strictly, they don't want it in the C C N Rs because they don't want an extra encumbrance on a future lot owner. Number 10, they just requested that any structures be struck. Obviously, the human remains, that is a law, so they see no issue with that remaining in there, but the structures portion, they asked be struck from that. Number 12, as you, I believe that this rule kind of exists to stop development that's not responsible, where there's lots of lots over 25%. And their feeling on this was, we don't want a limit where people can build, five-acre lots, a lot of places you can build. It's obviously possible to build on a 25% slope, and if someone wants to build on that hillside, then, you know, they don't really see an issue with that. And then, number 18, Bob was correct on that. Probably the biggest issue, they asked that, I request that that recommendation be removed. But the main issue was that the trail easement went past maybe their future home site. So if we could move it, like, you know, Bob put more flexible wording in there, you know, maybe that would address their concern there.
Okay, let me just ask this now. In condition number 18, as it has been modified by Mr. Short, am I understanding you correctly that that is now agreeable with the applicant?
I think they would prefer that it was removed.
Okay, that, okay, and that will come up in commission discussion?
Yeah.
I wanted to ask you, I believe Mr. Short pointed out that there is no fencing that is required. So I get what they're saying, because that's a three-mile, you know, fence line, a barbed wire fence. If they didn't want to go to the expense of putting in wildlife-friendly fencing, are they opposed to just taking it down?
I believe they are opposed to taking it down, yes. They have been, I will tell you, they have been doing a lot of fence remediation as far as removing some old fencing that's on the site. But I believe they're opposed to removing the perimeter fencing, yes.
Okay, and that'll be something that the commission talks about, but I just wanted to get that out there, so when we are, we've got as much information as possible. Okay, please continue on with any further comments.
I don't have, maybe just a few knots or notes I jotted down while we were talking. Talk of a wildlife corridor came up. As you saw on the floodplain map, there's a pretty significant floodplain, and development in those areas will be prohibited because it is a map 100-year floodplain. So, and that runs through the whole course of the subdivision, so I believe that will act as a wildlife corridor. Aside from that, I don't have anything else to say, but I'm happy to take any more questions if anyone has.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Braun? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Mr. McNeely, do we have our wildlife expert with us tonight?
I'm here.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Simmons. You have heard the conversation going on. Do you have any comments that you feel would be relative at this point regarding wildlife corridors? I would also like to ask for your input regarding the wildlife-friendly fencing and the applicant's request to leave the barbed wire up, or just as it is, not replace it, or their desire not to take it down at all. Could you please address that?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I do have some thoughts on that. It is great to hear that there won't be development in the floodplain, because floodplains are often used by wildlife as wildlife corridors. So if that is kept open, that will be a good thing for wildlife. I don't think they're really using that floodplain specifically to really travel anywhere, since it does dead-end at I-40. So I think they might just be kind of hanging around more. But I think that it will be good for them that it's kept open. As far as the retrofitting, the existing perimeter fence, I do think that would be a really good thing for wildlife. It's estimated that one ungulate per year, per 25, two-and-a-half-mile of fence, is entangled. So the perimeter fence, from my measurement, was two-and-a-quarter mile around the perimeter. So the three miles that Mr. Short mentioned might be some additional fencing on top of that. So if those trends hold, that might be one ungulate per year getting killed by that fence. And I just did a really quick and dirty cost estimate for what it would cost to have a crew come out and replace the top and bottom wire, the barbed wire with smooth wire. And I came up with about $5,000. Obviously, that's just super rough estimate, but it doesn't seem like a really burdensome cost. And I do think it would be very beneficial and a good thing to do to really help wildlife on that subdivision.
Okay, Simmons, let me just have you expand a little bit more. When Mr. Short put up the diagram of wildlife-friendly fencing, you're talking about modifying the top strand and the bottom strand. Okay, so a barbed wire fence, correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't it have four strands?
They can have different strands, usually three or four is most common, yes. And there are wildlife-friendly designs for both of those. The main idea is that you want the top and bottom wire to be smooth. You want to see that minimum gap at the bottom there, about of 18 to 20 inches for pronghorn. And then there are different spacings that you want, whether, so I could share my screen and show different designs for three and four-wire versions, but you just want different spacing so that if a deer or elk jumps over, what happens a lot is their foot gets caught in that second-to-top wire, and they get entangled and they can't get out. So wildlife-friendly fencing has the special design gaps so that they can't get entangled going over if their foot does clip underneath that top wire.
Okay, so let me drill down on this just a little bit more, because I know that this is going to come up in commission discussion. So I believe that the fence showed that, the current fence that is there showed a four-strand barbed wire. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, so there we go. Now, can you be really explicit in how we modify that, starting at the top? Because to get to the 42 inches that's in the middle, if you count the top strand as strand one, you've got strand two, would strand three need to be removed?
That's a good question.
Basically, tell us how to modify the current fence if they desire to modify it, because they do have the option of removing it. But if they desire to modify it, can you be very explicit in what needs to be done? So there's no ambiguity?
Yes, I could. So what we want to see is, I don't know how, the distance between wires one and two is right now, but what you want to see is 12 inches there, and that'll keep that foot from getting entangled. So if that is less than 12 inches, if they replace that wire one, the top wire, with smooth wire, they could just maybe scooch it up a bit so that it is 12 inches to wire two.
Okay.
And then if they replace the bottom wire, and that bottom wire was smooth and 18 to 20 inches from the ground, that would do the trick.
Okay, so I understand that now. Strand number three, would that require removal?
No, that one can stay.
That one can stay. Okay, all right, very good. And did you have any further concerns? Because you did talk about the wildlife corridor being in the floodplain, it kind of dead-ending at I-40, so they may or may not use it. Are you aware of any other wildlife corridors that the commission needs to take into consideration in their discussion this evening?
No.
Okay, okay. Do you have anything else you can think of that, you know, you might want to bring our attention to?
No, my main concern was the fencing. That's my main comment. I don't really have anything else that's big.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Simmons.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Has, muted, Commissioner Best, do you have questions?
Yes, Ms. Simmons, is the flow here of animals mostly parallel to the highway? Does that make sense?
That does make sense. I believe so. So you guys did ask if there was a wildlife corridor, and there is one, and it clips the, I said no, but there is one that clips the western edge. But I didn't really see any changes we could ask the developer to make to really do anything. I didn't think it was a big concern, but that wildlife corridor does run north-south and just barely clips the western edge of that parcel.
Where the floodplain is there?
Well, the floodplain kind of runs northeast-southwest, and this, do you want me to share my screen? Can I do that? Yeah, it doesn't really run, okay, let me try and share my screen.
Madam Chair, can you see my screen?
Yes, Mr. Short, I can.
Can you see the floodplain?
Uh-huh, we can. Mr. Short, would it be possible for you to point out where Ms. Simmons is referencing?
Possibly, or she could share her screen, of course, if that'd be easier.
Okay, whatever is easiest, Ms. Simmons, you decide.
Do you have to unshare?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Sure. Okay, can you see that?
Ms. Simmons, I cannot, yes, there you go. I can see that.
Okay, so the black outline is our parcel, and that green stripes is the wildlife corridor. And that is, it's listed as a wildlife corridor for mountain lion and raptors. So not really the ungulates that we were concerned with as far as the fencing.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I will unshare.
Yeah, Commissioner Best, do you have any further questions?
No, I think that helps make sense of it. It's quite wide, so we're just influencing a small chunk of it. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to make, I'm going to open it up to members of the public. If I understood Mr. McNeely correctly, you need to press star six to unmute. Is that correct? Mr. McNeely?
All right, sorry, Madam Chair, I have to take ourselves off you. We have tried calling each of these numbers. They're all not picking up because they're on the line, but we've sent a text to each of these numbers, and we've mentioned several times here, yeah, any of the numbers. And I know at least one of these numbers we've identified is on a separate case, on a pick-and-run case. Yeah, we've put the information out. If anyone at one of the call-in phone numbers wants to speak, all you have to do is press star six, and you will be unmuted, and you'll immediately start speaking.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNeely. We're going to give it just a few seconds here. I am not seeing on my screen, I am not seeing anyone unmuting. Are you seeing it on your end? Are you seeing something I'm not?
Madam Chair, no, we are not seeing anyone unmute.
Okay, all right, then I am going to go ahead and close it to the public and open it up for commission discussion. So Commissioner Burton, you're up to share your thoughts, comments, suggestions, please.
Okay. I like the idea of modifying the fence based on our wildlife specialist. So I really would like to see that in there. If they have, I don't know, maybe we could do some kind of phased modification for the fence. Like, they do a chunk, and then after a certain extended period of time, another one. That's just something I'm just throwing out there, because I don't think those are continuous strands, that entire length. So I'm sure they break at some point. And the cultural resources is kind of important. So I think just, you know, making a point to say, take caution with any kind of future development, that, I think that would be a good thing to keep in there. But those are kind of, those are my biggest things.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Meyer?
Yes. You two, there was a snapshot of the fence, and if the snapshot of the fence is reflective of the rest of the fence all the way around the property, it basically all has to be redone over again. It's quite inadequate and dilapidated. And, you know, putting up the cost of a fence like this to a big development is not, in my opinion, a very large expense at all. It'll be passed on to whoever ends up with the property anyway. And if I had my way, I'd redo the whole fencing with wildlife all the way around. I mean, all said and done, we're imposing on the wildlife. That's their area. I don't like, I'll be honest with you, I don't like the proximity of this property to the National Monument in any scenario. So I'm very reluctant to vote for this, but that wildlife fencing, it really needs to be put in place, and we should be firm on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Commissioner Best?
Yes. I've got some internal conflicts about this. First of all, I'm very glad that we're dealing with the subdivision. That's much better than lot splits. But I'm very disappointed because we have so much flexibility, and we worked so hard to get it into our subdivision ordinance. And we've got some real assets here. We've got the wildlife, we've got cultural assets, we've got slopes and floodplains and the trail easement. We're right next to Walnut Canyon. This seems like a poster child for one of the creative subdivisions that we've made possible in the new ordinance. By setting aside, by identifying and setting aside some of the the conservation and cultural assets on this land and giving more lots, the applicant might come out the same financially, and we might be able to save some of these cultural and conservation assets. I don't know, since we're not talking directly to the applicant, it's a little hard to know how they would feel about this. Personally, I'd like to see a continuance and see if that's a possibility. We have some sense of the cultural assets, but really, in these cases, we usually ask that they be identified a little more specifically. And are there locations that, that might be preserved? I mean, in a perfect world, we would, we would call this ancient acres. We would set aside some, some, some of the more precious spots, and we would raise the price of these lots because of that. You know, that's the kind of thing I would like to see. Make money on these cultural and conservation assets and preserve them at the same time. So I would just like to hear from the other commissioners. I'm of two minds about it. Definitely better than lot splits. Don't want to push the applicant in that direction. But I feel like we could do a better job.
Okay, Commissioner Best, let me go, let me just continue on with the dialogue here that you have brought up. As you know, we have discussed, discussed condition number 10 that speaks directly to the cultural protections. I, I have not walked this property. I was kind of getting the sense, and if Mr. Short, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I was kind of getting the sense that it's sort of on the, on the, on the whole property, that there doesn't seem to be one, like, central place where we could set this specific piece aside. It seems to sort of be everywhere, and that's why I was thinking condition 10 spoke to this. If you read condition 10, Commissioner Best, does that, does that help you? Does that give you any ease in moving forward?
Could, could somebody read it, please? Because I, I'm having a hard time bringing it up.
Okay, it says, "The applicant shall exercise extra caution and monitoring when excavating the site during construction. If any structures or human remains are encountered during excavation, work shall stop immediately. And the state historic preservation officer shall be contacted to determine a mitigation strategy. These provisions shall be applied to any construction activity in the subdivision and included in the CCNRs."
Yeah, that's, that's not bad language.
Okay.
You know, I can, I, I see that we, first of all, since we seem to be able to use the CCNRs legally and permanently, that's a good tool. And I think staff has identified the major issues in those CCNRs. It's, it's just when you, when we walk away from this, our control over CCNRs or not is going to be very limited. I mean, you, you can't stop somebody from just covering up the hole and not calling ship-o because everybody knows how, what effect that can have. So again, I, I think we're doing the best that we can in, in a limited way, but I think we have some tools in the subdivision ordinance that we're not using. And since the applicant's not here, I, I don't know how they would feel about that.
Oh, okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. Mr. Short, I see that you have unmuted. I'm thinking you have something to add here.
Yeah, well, I was just going to say, if you look at this entire site, I mean, like, like, like I said before, I went out there with Mr. McNeely and Ms. Simmons several months ago, actually, before this application even came in. We drove across the entire property. That fence that you saw the picture of, we stopped there, immediately there's pottery shards on the ground. We moved to the next spot, immediately I found that, the nice one, the, you know, the nicer looking one there you see. And then went to the next spot, there's more pottery shards. I think the entire place, I think part of the point was to not make it too difficult on the applicant because then they would have to do this, this large archaeological survey, find everything that's important on the entire site, and then find some way to protect each of those pieces separately. And they might be all entire, there may not be a good place to kind of set aside a spot where, you know, the best archaeological resources are. So that, this was staff's thought in lieu of that, and, you know, in lieu of making it very difficult on the applicant, the fact that these are these large five-acre parcels and that there are places where people, you know, can put their homes. This is a, I, I'm not an archaeological expert of this, about this area, but this area, this is actually part of Donnie Park. It's in the Donnie Park area plan. This area is, is covered with this kind of stuff. There's a lot of this out here. So I think the density was an issue.
Okay, okay.
Disappointment, it's disappointing that the, the Walnut Canyon folks didn't respond. Maybe we're just going to have to live with it, but it's, it's a little disappointing, you know.
Yes, Commissioner Best, I was very surprised by that. I, I called up and left messages with the cultural resources people twice. And I did send an invitation to our subdivision committee meeting, our subdivision meeting to the director, and I did not hear anything at all. And this is very, this is within a hundred, a few hundred feet of the corridor that is actually part of Walnut Canyon.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Short, for that clarification. Commissioner Ruggles, comments, thoughts?
Okay. As conditions 10 and 12 are written, I can agree with that. And I do have a comment about dealing with ship-o. I believe that since this is private property, anything such as pot shards, even a structure, there's not a lot of control they have over that, I believe. I wound up having to deal with a lot of this while I was volunteering at Reardon Mansion. But human remains are quite a different matter. But I do like the way that conditions 10 and 12 are written with the modifications that have been suggested. Insofar as the fencing goes, I've strung a little bit of wire, and I'm looking at the photo of that fence. It'll take a little bit of work to change it over to wildlife-friendly fencing. I think what may be more appropriate would be to modify the condition somewhat to allow the developer the option of either updating the fence to wildlife-friendly or removing it entirely. And simply stating what the individual homeowner or builder can do with fencing, say, for dog runs or storage and screening around their house. But those sorts of things, when they establish the homeowner's organization, that's how you can control that. But at this point, I think an option to remove the fence or update it is probably the most appropriate way to deal with this. And the other idea is that of having barbed wire across the back of everybody's yard, with the exception of two lots. That kind of presents a little bit of liability, I think. I know I had a great deal of it on my property here, it was an old Forest Service fence, and it was one of the first things I did, was to remove that barbed wire because of that liability. So that being said, that, that's pretty much it for my comments on this right now.
Okay, Mr., or Commissioner Ruggles, let me just clarify. When you stated that you are in support of condition number 12, it reads, "The final plat shall protect slopes through the designation of slope easements that do not allow for any accroachment of structure onto slopes over 25%." Is that specifically what you were referring to?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Walters?
Hey, Commissioner Walters here. I live just a few miles east of here on the other side of Walnut Canyon in, in almost identical type conditions. The Walnut Canyon National Monument was occupied for hundreds of years. These, these people were hard gatherers, and the pot shards and stuff you find are in every direction for miles and miles and miles. I have been all over this property and up all the way to the Walnut Canyon National Monument, all the way to the, to the west, to the houses that are, that are back in there, and all the way into Walnut Canyon on walking most of this terrain over the last 20 years. This is an active ranch, and it will remain an active ranch. The applicant here does have the ranching rights to ranch around this property, has the, the legal authority to do so. And, and I think that you have to maintain the fencing around this property to keep the cattle out. The, the drainageways that are here in the evenings and, and late afternoons are, are full of elk and deer. And you can see them as, and antelope as well. And, and they feed down in here. It's not so much a migratory area as it is a feeding area. And then they head back up and bed in the trees. If you, you, you look at the fences and, and things here, you can see the primary areas where they, they cross. I have rebuilt miles and miles and miles of fences, both for my family, other families, and for the Arizona Elk Society. We've also created a lot of jumps by putting plastic pipes over the wire, just splitting a plastic conduit and putting it over the wire so there's a smooth jump for them rather than modifying entire fences. In fact, most of the Babbitt Ranch is done that way. So I think there's ways of working around this. Because our, our load next month is so light, we might want to, to look at having a continuance where we can actually get the owners here and, and speak with them. As you know, the county doesn't enforce CCNRs. We do have final plat requirements that could go on the property, but then you get into enforcement situations. And, you know, we're, we're, we as a county are not real good at enforcing the rules. And we're just too big. In this situation, I think we need to come to some sort of agreement with the owner. I, I like seeing that they've come in on the subdivision. I see that they've, they've cut the road in already. And I've gone over and, and looked at some of this, and, and I think that they've laid it out rather nicely. I, I think we just need to, to not be so authoritative with them and, and kind of talk to them. These are people that have been here for a long, long time or, or, or quite entrenched in the community. And I, I think they'll, they'll be very reasonable to work with. But I, I, I think that there's, there's a lot of, of good things about this project. And, and I just don't think that we want to play hardball here coming out of the gate. I can't, I can't support it. I, 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 this, this property is relatively flat. If there's an area in here that has a slope that's over 25%, it's not very big. There might be a little, little clip off one of these little noles, but there's not much. This is pretty flat, rolling property. That's pretty much what I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Walters. That's helpful. Commissioner Clifford?
I, I agree with Commissioner Best and Commissioner Walters on the continuants to get the owners here so we can talk to them and get their side of the, of what they're asking for. With the fencing, I can see wildlife-friendly fencing. It is a working cattle ranch. You see where the fences lean down as where the cattle is rubbed up against it, getting flies and stuff off of them. So you're always going to have that. I don't care if it's wildlife-friendly fence or if it's barbed wire, you're going to have that issue. It's, it is a very good area for this subdivision. And I've driven around it also. And I, I would almost go in favor of a continuance until we could talk to the owners and get a better understanding of what they are asking for because they are still running as a cattle ranch. So see what their pros and cons are for that.
Okay, okay, thank you, Commissioner Clifford. Commissioner Walters, I see you're still unmuted. Do you have additional comments you want to make? Nope, you just muted. All right. I share something. Oh, Commissioner Ruggles, you unmuted.
Yes, for very good reason. Thanks to Commissioner Walters' statement about there still being an active cattle ranch. In that case, I think his suggestion that we look at a continuance on this to get the fencing worked out to everyone's benefit is quite appropriate. That, that changes the picture quite a bit as far as I'm concerned right now.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. I agree. That was actually why I said, "Thank you, Commissioner Walters, for sharing this information" because I believe that he has really shined a different light that I never got until we had, until we've had this discussion. I know that the applicant is not with us, that the representative is. And I'm wondering if the representative could, could speak to this, please?
Oh, yes, I can speak to it, thank you. So I would really ask that there not be a continuance. And if you want to modify the recommendations, we do that now and let it go to the board of supervisors. As Commissioner Walter said, we don't want to push these people too hard, and they really are on the verge of doing a lot split. So I'm very worried about a continuance, so I'm hoping we can proceed here tonight.
Okay. Then let me just clarify what you, what I believe I heard you say. That, because it appears to me that the fence seems to be the biggest issue.
Correct. And we can't, like, like Commissioner Walter said, we can't remove the fence because it is an active cattle ranch. If, if you want to, I think it would be fine if you wanted to proceed with a recommendation that be turned to a wildlife-friendly fence, and we can move forward. I think we can maybe continue to discuss it, or maybe they can come to terms with that. But I, I very much do not think it's a good idea to do a continuance.
Okay. Okay, I'm just, while I've got you, let me just review my notes. I'm trying to read my own handwriting here. Okay, I do not believe that I have any further questions. Something that I would like to ask the other commissioners, and I guess we could even go down rule call. But Commissioner Walters pointed out that, that I believe it's condition number 12, Commissioner Ruggles was in favor of it, but as Commissioner Walters pointed out, this is really pretty flat. So if we were to choose our, you know how you have to choose your battles carefully? Would this be a condition that the other commissioners would be willing to, to let go? Condition number 12 regarding the slope. I know Commissioner Ruggles has spoken to it, but I'm going to do rule call down. Commissioner Burton, your thoughts?
I'm okay with removing that condition.
Okay, Commissioner Meyer?
My concern is, is the fencing. Either we get the quality fence or none at all as far as the sloping. I don't see, the lots are plenty big, so there's plenty of places you can build in. It wouldn't be a concern to me, the slope.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Best, comments on slope?
Yeah, that's more of a, of a high-density urban concern. Nobody's going to build on a steep slope when they don't have to. It's expensive and awkward.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ruggles, you've already stated your, your thoughts. Would you like to say anymore?
Yes, I would. In the light of the discussion, of course, I have to reconsider that. And I think the reason for my reconsidering it is a very simple reason that this is one of the compromises we may have to make in order to move forward with this. You know, we've had this to deal with before. If it's a wildcat subdivision, we don't want to see that. If we could get a subdivision, a developed subdivision, and we're going to have to give up a few things, it looks like, in order to move forward with that. So I will, I certainly wouldn't insist on that staying in. I think it could come out.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Clifford? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Clifford?
Yeah, I'm in favor of striking number 12. As long as we can get the fencing.
Okay, and Mr. Christelman, I see your hand is being raised. Would you please offer your thoughts, comments?
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you so much. Jay Christelman here. I think Commissioner Walters makes a really great point when he referenced what the Forest Service standard for wildlife fencing is. And that is a PVC topper over the top strand and in some cases, the bottom strand. And they do so intermittently. It's not contiguous throughout the entire length of the fence. This fence is bordering private property and Forest Service property. So I think that standard would be very applicable here. And it would be something that would meet the needs of our urban wildlife planner, I'd hope, as well as the interests of the private property owner.
Okay, okay. I'm even thinking, just kind of outside the box here, I won't be making the motion, but maybe on the fence, we could even, as we modify it, say as approved by. So we can get to that when we get there. Okay, thank you, Mr. Christelman.
Yes, thanks, Ms. Chair. I really appreciate the time that you've given me.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Ruggles, I see you still have another comment.
Yes, but it is on another, one of the conditions. And that happens to be the easement for access to the national forest. I'm in line with the property owner and the developers on that for the simple reason that we have some of these easements in the platted subdivision where I live. And the nuisance value is something to consider. And I guess, I think with this development, that could potentially be a problem. So I go along with the desire to remove that from the subdivision.
You know what? What number are you talking about, Commissioner?
It's a little difficult for me to pull that up right now. I've got to rely on staff to come back with that. I don't remember what the number is.
That should be condition number 18.
18, yeah.
Okay, okay. All right. I hope the other commissioners are taking good because someone's going to have to make a motion. Okay, where I'm at on this is Commissioner Walters really brought up a lot of good points. And so then we've gone back to getting the applicant's representative the thoughts on that. The applicants are not here. And so you know what you get when you assume. But I'm going to have to assume that the applicants felt that their representative would be able to speak in their favor enough that they trusted him to do it. So I'm going to go with the applicant's representative with his thoughts on not continuing it because I was very willing to do that. I also want to say that I do support subdivision versus lot splits. So I think that we need to be balanced here. I am in support of removing condition 12 as far as the slope, condition 18. And it's the fence. I'm a little fuzzy on what we need to do there. And so I'm wondering how the other commissioners feel about saying, "Modify the fencing as approved by our wildlife planner." Would anyone chime in on this, please?
Yes.
Ruggles, you're up.
Madam Chair, could I say something on this?
Yes, you can, Mr. Short, please.
Thank you. Can you see the condition as it's up on the screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so the way the condition is written, it does not have that design that we talked about later. We just showed an example. It has a reference to a document that shows. It's called Guidelines for Wildlife Compatible Fencing. So I think the way this is written, it does speak to a lot of different types, a lot of different options for wildlife friendly fencing. In fact, the wildlife planner, Jessica, actually asked me to change it and make it like this so it is more flexible as written. So I'm not sure if that is what would be acceptable to the commission. But I think it already is pretty flexible the way it's written.
Okay. Let's see, is Ms. Simmons still with us?
Here I am.
Oh, there you are. Okay. You have heard the conversation, specifically what was brought up by Commissioner Walters tonight and also by Mr. Christelman regarding the PVC. And do you have any issue with that? Or do you feel that that's something that would be workable?
No, I think this is a terrific discussion and a lot of really interesting points have been brought up. And it's absolutely true that there are many ways to skin a cat and there are many ways to make a fence more wildlife friendly. And that includes PVC, these crossings. And that includes, you know, even some things that can be done. Like maybe only the top wire is made smoother. So anyway, I think that referencing the applicant to that document and also putting in as approved by me because I am very willing to have a flexible conversation with them about ways to make the fence more wildlife friendly.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Would one of the commissioners, anyone? Actually, Commissioner Walters, I would like to ask you. You're the one that brought this up, so I would like to ask you specifically. I think that we've made headway and I think that we kind of all agree that there is some wiggle room in the fencing. Do you think that it should be, that they should work with Ms. Simmons as approved by our wildlife expert?
And this Commissioner Walters here. Yes, I think we can work this out. It's not an and/or thing. There's just a lot of different ways to do this. There's some real high-traffic areas. If you go out and walk this, and I'd be tickled to go out and walk it with anybody and show you where these corridors are at. But those corridors are going to change somewhat when they build homes on here. So as long as they continue to make these fences a little safer for the animals to cross, whether it's PVC or they add another smooth wire to the top and bond that to the barbed wire so that they still have some protection from the cattle rubbing on it. There's a lot of different ways to do this. And I think Ms. Simmons has already indicated that she's willing to work on this. And I know the family quite well. And I think that they would be tickled to work with this as well.
Okay, okay, thank you. Then the best that I can tell, we have now addressed, I believe, everything. And so as a commission, I know that I've got a lot of notes here. So I need someone to make a motion. And as a commission, because there are going to be some modifications, let's work together and make sure that we dot every i and cross every t on this one. So who wants to take a stab at making a motion on this?
I'll try.
Okay.
But I'm going to ask for everybody's help on this so that we get this right the first time.
Okay.
We talked about striking a couple. One of them was the number 12, the slope. On 10, there was some modifications here on shall. On private property, as far as the pots and that sort of stuff, we're not really regulated on that. I'm more concerned with actually digging up a graveside or something like that. So I kind of like that in there. The fencing, I think that it's written broadly enough to be workable and yet applicable. Is there some other areas that somebody wants to jump in that we need to modify?
What was condition number seven? Mr. Short, I believe there needed to be a modification to number seven?
Well, seven was CCNR shall limit the use of pesticides, herbicides to protect sensitive habitat as recommended by Arizona Game and Fish. And I'd like to restate that the county does not enforce CCNRs. So that's simply a nice thing to do. You know, enforcement is a whole different ballgame. But in the final plat, we can have some restrictions on here that we put things in that will help guide people in the future.
Okay. Okay, so if I'm understanding it correctly, we're modifying condition number seven to say the CCNR shall limit the use of pesticides and herbicides to protect sensitive habitat with coordination from the Coconino County Wildlife Planner. That's condition number seven. We're striking condition number 18. And we're striking condition number 12. And we are modifying condition number 10 to replace the words "should" with "shall."
I believe that covers it unless somebody else has input.
No, I would agree with that. That covers it for me.
Okay, okay, thank you. So Commissioner Ruggles, is that a second?
Yes, that would be a second to that motion.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Walters and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of SUV 20-008 with the modifications as stated. All in favor, say aye. Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
And Commissioner Auntie Veras, aye. So SUV 20-008 is going to go to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation for approval. All right, we are now on to item number four on the agenda. And that is case number ZC 20-006, CUP 20-023, and DRO 20-003.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good, thank you. Okay, this is the pick and run expansion as you suggested with both this zone change, a DRO and a CUP involved with this. In this case, the property owner in African is Ed Flores Investments and Flagstaff. Representative is Michael James, I believe, from Woodson Engineering. And the location of the property is at 3294 Forest Service Road 237, Kachina Village. The existing zoning is CG 10,000 and RM 10A. And the size of the property is 1.11 acres. And this is the request, a zone change from RM 10A to CG 10,000 on a 0.47 acre parcel. Conditional use permit to expand a convenience store and add a new fuel island and then a DRO for expanded commercial development. The DRO includes site design, landscaping, lighting, signage, building design materials, and colors. This is a vicinity map showing the subject properties. They are at the Kachina Village exit on Kachina Boulevard. And as you can see in this photograph, this vicinity map. The aerial photo shows the two properties. The one on the north has the existing pick and run development that we're all familiar with. The one on the south is zoned currently for RM 10A or multifamily development. And that would be changed to CG 10,000 to allow the expansion of this development. I want to give you a little background on this. The Kachina Village Pick and Run was originally built in 1987. That's according to the applicant. I actually saw CUPs and went back earlier than that. So I'm not positive about that. This expansion will include larger restrooms, new coffee offerings, new fountain offerings, prepared home meals, and expansion of the restaurant. And that is the Subway that will become its own restaurant with its own entry in this particular development. Development on the adjoining lot to the south would include a boat RV fuel pumps, a new canopy, parking, propane fill tank, an air compressor, and new landscaping. And I wanted to talk about the waivers first just because I'm coming up to the map and I wanted to kind of show you how these work. They are asking for two different waivers. One is the parking waiver, allowing 34 spaces instead of the 38 off-street parking spaces normally required for a convenience store and restaurant. So the restaurant use has made the parking increase quite a bit since it requires quite a bit of parking. And this is within the 20% allowance that staff can approve as long as criteria is being met and those findings have been met in your staff report. The second one is a screening waiver line, the six-foot fence along the west property line to be in front of the landscaping rather than in back of the landscaping. So the zoning ordinance says that you have the fence first. And this is, it's odd, it depends on how you look at this, but the fence first and the landscaping closer to the adjacent property. And I'll show you how that works here. This is the site plan and landscape plan kind of shown together. So the new parcel is this one to the south. Our zoning ordinance requires that you have a 20-foot buffer between these multifamily properties to the south and to the west in this case. On the south side, the applicant would build the six-foot fence or wall along here and put the landscaping on the outside. On this west side, there is already a fence right here. So the applicant is requesting that they not have to build another fence, which would be right here, and leave the landscaping inside two fences in a no man's land sort of place. So they would just use that fence. And there's a condition in the staff report that says if that fence does become dilapidated or collapses, if it doesn't need to be replaced, the applicant will replace it. And you can see from this site plan, I want you to note the circulation as it comes in and goes back here to these fuel pumps for these larger RVs and trailers and boats and things like that that come through. They can get gas and circulate back out. The problem with the pick and run right now is it's very congested because there's no place for these larger vehicles to go. So this really helps with that circulation and helps, you know, get more business from those kinds of vehicles for the applicant as well. Out here on this side, this is actually, if you can see this, to the east of the subject properties. This is actually ADOT right-of-way. This is Forest Road 237 right here. But it's actually ADOT right-of-way associated with the interstate. The applicant has previously gotten approval for landscaping in this right-of-way area because it's just kind of an open area here. It actually looks quite nice, landscaping does. So the applicant is asking to do the same thing again in this case. They do have to work with ADOT in order to get permission to do that. That is by way of an encroachment permit. And they are doing that, they're working on that at this point. And there's a condition in the staff report that requires that. And I wanted to show you that fence. This is the existing fence between, this is the new parcel that would develop into, a lot of this fencing here would come down. This is the new fence that would be in lieu of, it's already there. So in lieu of building another fence, this fence already exists. This is the floor plan of the existing site. You can see the, you know, this normal convenience store. There are small restrooms. And then over here, there's a Subway kind of counter over here on this side. And what the applicant would like to do is expand out. This is all new area going back in this direction, it would be to the south, and put in an entire Subway restaurant. You can see the entire restaurant. They would also have large restrooms. So if you've been to the pick and run, you know that it is really busy all the time. So this is something that they really need to be able to do here. And I wanted to show you the existing landscaping. This is the way the landscaping looks now. One of the things the applicant did not propose is trees along this frontage. And as you can see, there is one small tree here. But most of the existing landscaping doesn't have trees either. Staff was okay with that, you know, as they proposed that. The trees would go in other locations. This is a picture looking to the south at the new parcel that they would expand into. And we also, I know the commission has approved a CUP for multifamily development with cabins, which would be adjacent to this parcel as well. And this is another picture. And this is another picture showing that parcel they would expand into. This is the existing storefront. Just kind of note how the storefront looks and the signage on the front. And I'll show you what the plan is for the future. This is the new storefront. You can see it has a separate entrance for the subway. It has, you know, much nicer design with these gables and the colors are kind of, the materials don't show well here, but the materials are a little different than you can see here in actuality. These are the materials, the proposed roofing materials, kind of rusted corrugated metal. And the proposed wall material is a raised block. And then the wood on the side here, this is the wood that would be used for the trusses. Gives it a nice forest look. And then this is the coloring on the parapet of the building. And this is a picture of the existing convenience store. I wanted to point out this sign right here, the the large freestanding sign, monument sign right there. The applicant is going to use exactly that same sign, but move it over to the other side of the property since this new development is going in here. And then make some other changes to the signage. This is the signage plan. So you can see that monument sign here. You can see the three front, the three signs on front of the store, the new subway sign and these other two signs. And then on the new canopy down here on the field island canopy, they are proposing this sign that is that shows the price of gasoline. It was much larger and staff worked with them. They did make it smaller. And we thought that was more appropriate for the D R O. This is site photometric plan. It does meet the standards of the lighting zone two, which is a requirement of the Kachina Village Area Plan. This is conceptual. The applicants looking at a couple of couple of different possibilities for lighting on this site. This this is not, this, like I said, this is conceptual. So this is not a lighting permit. The lighting permit would be permitted, would be approved separately by staff, but this is their conceptual idea. The proposed lighting would stay pretty much the same. The lights on the left are the ones that would go into the canopy, the field island canopies. This black light is security lighting around the building. And then this other light on the right-hand side, lower right, that is a recessed light that would go in the canopy in front of the store. So most of the light I hear is not is not very visible. And then, but there is that nice kind of black light that 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 would be visible. Most of it is recessed. In terms of citizen participation, because of COVID nineteen pandemic, the director approved an alternative citizen participation process that provided for the applicant to notify property owners of the proposed development and invite comments on the proposal. And you you have to remember that this was one of the, I think this was one of the early applications where where they were working on having a citizen participation plan. And this is right in the beginning of the COVID nineteen pandemic issue. So people weren't as well versed in having Zoom meetings and those kinds of things. So the director just just simply said, you need to, you know, you can notify property owners. So those property owners were notified. Neither the applicant nor staff has received any comments on this application. These are the findings of fact for a zone change. Those are discussed in your staff report. This property is within the Kachina Village Plan area. And I did I did not list all of them here, but there were, there was lots of support in the policies of that plan for this particular development and for the for the zone change, of course, in this particular case. Findings of fact for conditional use permit, also address those. And I also addressed the findings for waivers and that's in the staff report as well. This is, in order for the commission to approve a design review overlay application, you just simply have to determine that the development is consistent with the Kachina Village Area Plan Design Guidelines. And I do not remember exactly the page numbers of those, but they are in that they were pointed out in your staff report. And with that, staff recommends approval of D R O twenty zero zero three and C U P twenty zero two three with the conditions in the staff report. And of course, that is contingent upon approval of the zone change. When this goes forward to the Board of Supervisors and the zone change is approved, then this is kind of retro, retro retro action, I'll say, of the commission. The the C U P and D R O are approved as well. And staff also recommends that the commission recommends the Board of Supervisors approve Z C twenty zero zero six. And I pointed out that this requires three separate motions in order to approve this proposal. With that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, go ahead.
Okay, have you had any opportunity to get with Mark Stento? And look at the lighting that has been proposed for this at this point? Oh, and by the way, I'm not going to start off by saying I disagree with you, Bob.
Okay, good. Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Anyway, go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, I haven't, no, I have not talked to Mark Stento, but I I did have conversation with him this week on other issues. And he is going to be approving our lighting permits in the future and we're certainly happy about that. So Mark Stento would would be looking at this lighting and and, you know, making a decision about it would be approving the lighting permits, so.
That that is very good because I've had an opportunity to talk to him at the Donnie Park Area Plan Committee meeting last. And I am very impressed by his ability technically as well as his approach to doing these things. That being said, however, in looking at this lighting plan, I noted that condition five specified that it meets the requirements of section four point three lighting zone two. But in looking at the lighting plan, I noticed that the total number of lumens with their plan is at seven, almost seventy-nine thousand. But if you look at table four point four in section four, in section four three for lighting zone two, they're only permitted fifty thousand lumens. Now, I don't know if you're aware of that, but it looking at the the way the ordinance is constructed, it's a it's a relatively easy mistake to make. And the other thing is I see that the wall lighting, they have got lighting that okay, exceeds the twenty-five hundred lumen limit for it would be zone two and that would be for the class two lighting, which would require low-pressure sodium in that case. So.
Commissioner, Mr. Ruggles, I apologize for interrupting, but and I also apologize because it looks like the the applicant did update that. We did discover those issues.
Oh.
The applicant did update that plan and I apologize because I thought that plan was in here. Maybe it's not. However, the new plan that they did, because I noted actually both of those issues, I feel a little proud of myself that I actually noticed that. So I think that might have been the the wrong plan and I, like I said, I apologize again for that. The because what we did look at, we noted that one light was a little bit higher in lumens than it should have been. So the applicant came back and showed us a light that was appropriate lumens. And then the other issue was that it was at seventy-eight thousand lumens where it should have been at fifty-five, I think, is what we looked at because it's a one point one acre site. So that's what they had gotten to and I was trying to see if I could find that plan in my in my file here.
Well, I've got a couple of other things that go along with this, which I'll bring up for commission review because if they are still proposing all four thousand K correct correlated color temperatures for the lighting, including the canopy lighting and the pack lighting on the walls. This is not consistent at all with what we approved several years ago for the Dollar Store. The availability of lighting at this point in time has changed considerably and I'm going to bring up a discussion about what we do with color temperatures. And the other thing I noted, I don't know if you looked at this with the applicant, but the canopy lighting, there is an option that Cree has for a three thousand K recessed or flat lens light that is I D A International Dark Sky Association approved. And anyway, I don't know if that was looked at. But this is something I'm going to address when we get down to discussing the D R O and I I have a revision to condition five. I'm going to run by people relative kind of nailing this down a little bit.
Commissioner Ruggles, just as a point of order, why don't you go ahead and present that to Mr. Short now and let's get his comments. And then we then we can also have the applicant. He will know what that is and so he can speak to that when he's up next.
Okay, I spent a lot of time looking at this, so I have something prepared that may address this, I think. And that would be condition five of D R O twenty dash zero three. Condition five, as it states right now, a lighting permit meeting the requirements of section four point three. And lighting zone two shall be approved prior to the installation of any new lighting on the site. What I would like to do is add to that, saying additionally, the C C T or color or correlated color temperature of class one luminaires shall be three thousand K or less, which Cree does offer. And class two luminaires over twenty-five hundred lumens shall be narrow-band amber. And class two luminaires shall have a C C T or correlated color temperature of twenty-seven hundred K or less, which is offered in the specs by the manufacturers of the other lighting luminaires.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Ruggles?
Yes.
If you look at, can can you see what's up on the screen now?
No.
Oh, you can, okay.
Nope.
It's not being shared, all right.
No, it's it's not, Mr. Short.
All right, let me see if I can share that.
B S on the screen.
That's all we have.
All you have is what?
Just B S.
Yes, okay, let me share something here, see if I can get something up. And I I apologize, I thought this had been had been taken out, although, you know, I think you may have other things to discuss about lighting. If you look at this particular, just, and I'll have to get that really close to see it, but I don't know if you can see that, but at the bottom of the screen, it shows.
Yeah, if you can enlarge it.
Can you see? So this is the plan that I think something might have happened. I mean, I attached all these things to the staff report to put them in, but this one apparently didn't get in there. You can see the total limits are is fifty-four thousand four hundred and sixty. And I can't remember what the other issue was, but there.
Can you move?
I guess the other thing you that I looked at and I and like I said, I did not go through a lighting permit and look at everything in detail because this plan is conceptual. This is a concept, has a lot to do, has to do with the D R O, has to do with the C U P as well, of course. But the final lighting on the site would be approved through a lighting permit. And my my understanding, I didn't have a measuring tool and everything, but if lights are tucked in underneath a canopy at a certain distance, then the the total lumens are can be counted as less. So I took the applicant at their word for this with, of course, the future. In the future, this would go to Mark Stento at this point, which is really nice that they can look at this. So my understanding, I'll just, I'll just say that my understanding of the way the code works is that if the applicant's lighting plan works, if it meets the ordinance, then then that can be approved. Is is that's is that your understanding, Mr. Ruggles?
Not quite, but one thing I need you to do first is to move the chart over so it is fully visible. Because that shows what the color temperature of the lighting is that's being proposed. And canopy lighting at forty K, well, relative to the area plan, the area plan is requesting something that is dark sky compatible. And the manufacturer of those lights for the canopy shows a three thousand or thirty K lighting, which is I D A approved, which is highly desirable because of the diminished quantity of blue light and somewhat less green light that is part of that, which creates sky glow. And that's one of the things the observatory and astronomers want to see go. And in terms of the actual effectiveness of lighting, there's very little difference in the color rendering index for three thousand versus four thousand. The other thing is I still see recessed lighting for the the small square lighting that would be essentially walkway lighting is still forty K when twenty-seven hundred K is available. Again, the same problem. And when we're talking about the pack lighting, the Lithonia lighting, it is still shown as forty K, which and they offer a twenty-seven, twenty-seven hundred K, which is much more in keeping with what we asked the Dollar Store to do and and they did that willingly. Now, if we're going to do anything about the dark sky ordinance and try to maintain some semblance of keeping up with that, then four thousand K lighting just doesn't do it. That is why the change to condition five is what I'm suggesting. It's not giving away much. And by the way, the the lighting totals are excellent. And the other thing is they've done extremely well with the canopy lighting. It meets the the code, no problem.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, thanks. Thank you for that. I I understand what you're saying. So proceed.
Okay, well, don't take this as a personal matter of disagreement. This is fairly technical and it takes a lot of looking at the specs for the lighting that is being proposed, sort it all out. Spend a lot of time doing that. But I'm also aware of what we've asked for in the past in this area and even further south. And people are willing, have been willing in the past to go to either a twenty-seven hundred K L E D lighting where they don't have to meet that twenty-five hundred lumen and above standard. And we've had very little pushback on that, if any, that I can recall.
No, that's correct, Mr. Commissioner Ruggles. I guess my point is the way I look at this is according to what the lighting ordinance allows. And if there is something missing in here with that, then, I mean, I going beyond what the lighting ordinance indicates at this point, staff isn't able to do that normally, so.
Well, I would remind you that we have done this numerous times in the past. I would remind you that we have done this numerous times in the past.
Yep, I, I actually remember the Dollar Store, yep, I do remember that.
So, I would ask that both you and staff and, of course, other members of the commission take that into consideration. As a matter of fact, I think the proposed, one of the proposals for something out at, in the Belmont area, we went over that, and that would technically be zone three, but we insisted on lighting going into the CUP that went far beyond what is required in lighting zone three, in terms of amber LED lighting there. And that was based on their new area plan. So it's not just what we did at the Dollar Store, it's what we've done in other areas. And I would also remind you that the zone three up there in Greenhaven, the canopy lighting, 3,000K, that's what they proposed.
Yeah. Mr. Ruggles, I certainly wouldn't argue with you about the lighting on these canopies, especially as that they can be brighter than they, than they need to be. And certainly in all of the area plans are actually the, both in Kachina and Doni Park and actually in Belmont as well, they all indicate that lighting there should be lighting zone two standards, whether they're actually in that zone or not.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, does that, do you have any other questions for Mr. Short?
Nothing other than to say he's done an excellent job with everything else.
Okay.
He deserves a compliment for that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the other commissioners have any questions from Commissioner Short at this time? Okay, seeing none, I would like to invite the applicant to address the commission, state your name and your address, and if you would like to speak to the conversation and offer any other comments that you would like, please. Okay, Mr. Flores? Okay, I'm looking, on my participant list, it has Ed Flores, the third one down. Mr. Flores, I'm assuming that that is you, the applicant in this case.
Madam Chair, we actually have Michael James is here, I see he's there, he, he was the applicant, he may want to speak first on this, and maybe Mr. Flores wants to speak.
Can you hear me?
Okay, so thank you for that, Mr. Short. Okay, so who is trying to speak right now?
Can you hear me? My name is Ed Flores.
Yes, we can, we can hear you, Mr. Flores. Please state your name and address for the record, and then go ahead and address the commission.
Yes, my name is Ed Flores, address is 5550 East Sunset Drive. Thank you for allowing me to speak. As, as you stated, we, I, we built the facility in 1987, so we're, we're 33 years old. The store has been a great neighbor and providing great services to the, to the community. But in 33 years, we've had an increase in vehicle traffic, an increase in restroom traffic, an increase in the size of motor homes, travel trailers with tag vehicles, and some of these with the increased size have created a, a big congestion at the entryway. So what we're trying to propose, well, let me back up, we took a local survey and, from the, our local residents, and what they requested was more food offering choices, like takeout, curbside pickup, or maybe even delivery, propane service, ethanol-free fuel for their small engines, like boat, boat engines, ATVs, mowers, that type of thing. And then obviously, the restrooms have not kept up with the increase in restroom traffic. So what we've, we're proposing is larger restrooms, the subway, it would remain approximately the same size, we're, we're contemplating adding a kitchen area to accommodate the, the, the food choices that the locals are requesting, you know, possibly Mexican foods, taco burritos, make it a Taco Tuesday, those types of things where we don't attract more parking traffic, if you will. We would use an app to, where the locals can call in ahead, order, and we can have a park, a curbside delivery, and/or in the future, maybe possibly food delivery. So those are the things that we're trying to do. And then the, in, in the south side, we're trying to take away those people that have those 40-foot motor homes with an ATV behind them. And those types of individuals, look where they can pull in and, and get their, get their fuel. And we, right at the moment, we've only got the far south island that has diesel. So what happens is they pull in and they tend to go to the south and block the other traffic. The customers that are there trying to pull out, it becomes sort of congested. And a lot of these travelers follow in pairs, it seems like. So then you've got the guy at the island, and then maybe his buddy following behind him, trying to pull in. So it really becomes congested there. So we're trying to eliminate that or mitigate the traffic by trying to force the traffic to the south, get their islands, the, at the south, where we've got them with the diesel and/or gasoline, and then they can make that U-turn and come back around and try to get that traffic so it, it has a smoother flow to it, if you will.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flores, you, you've got a wonderful problem that you're trying to address.
It becomes, it becomes hard, it really does.
Yeah, let me ask you this, you heard the comments brought by Commissioner Ruggles regarding the lighting? Let me just ask you this, we have had, I, I know what he's talking about, about the Dollar General and other developments, that they have had, you know, a bit stricter lighting program. Are you willing to work with county staff, whoever is necessary, in getting your lighting permit to, to make it more in line with what Commissioner Ruggles was speaking about?
Yes, we, you know, we, we submitted a lighting plan a little over four years ago, and we, we, we were approved, we changed the lighting underneath the canopy, the canopy, because at the time, we had high-pressure sodium lights that would make the, the power meter just spin continually. So we were not user-friendly, if you will. I mean, it was expensive, and so we were approved in 2015, I think, or less, somewhere in that area. So we changed the, the canopy lighting. We don't have any wall packs on the existing building, what we do have is, I think there may be three, two, two sides that have underneath a flat lens lighting that are under the eve. That's for protection for the employees when they go to empty the trash containers out, so they're not stuck in the, in the complete darkness.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Flores, and let me, let me just follow, or actually kind of conclude with this question. Have you read the staff report and agree with the conditions?
Yes, and, and then I think the planner, Mr. Short and I discussed that, that, that we would do everything we can to come in with that 55,000 lumens, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Do any of the other commissioners have questions? And I see you, Commissioner Ruggles, for Mr. Flores, please go ahead.
Okay, one thing I would, would like to say to Mr. Flores, I, I think your plan is really excellent. You're doing the right thing in addressing the problems that you've been dealing with. And I will make one comment about the LPS, the low-pressure sodium lighting that you had for your canopy lighting, that is actually not very good lighting for a canopy at a service station or a fuel island, because color rendition is almost non-existent, it is non-existent with that. So you did the right thing by upgrading it. My, my other, I do have a question. Is the lighting that you've got in the existing canopies something that you were planning on replacing as part of this, or were you going to go forward with it?
My, my, we, it wasn't cheap to, to replace the lighting that we, that we did in 2015. So my hope was that we would work around that and try to reduce lighting lumens at other, in other areas to try to accommodate that 55,000 lumen total.
The reason I asked about that is, I don't, do not think it's appropriate to ask you to do further retrofitting as you go forward with this project, because, as I said, I think it's very good. But I think the, the lighting does need a little refinement. And in the process of commission discussion, I've already made some changes to what I proposed for five, would be, condition five of the DRO, that would be a lot more amenable to everyone in this case. The other thing I will tell you is that I've looked at this business of lighting and to quite a great extent, and I find that if you go down to, say, 3,000K lighting for your new canopy, that the safety and the color rendition do not suffer as a result of that. You're more limited by the number of lumens you're allowed. So, and the other thing about pack lighting is, there are options to meet requirements similar to those of the Dollar Store, which also don't do anything to compromise the safety of your customers or your employees, because they do provide excellent color rendition and don't compromise your ability to move around on the property and see where you're going. But just something to keep in mind, but otherwise, boy, you've got a terrific proposal here.
Well, you know, we've, the, the lighting that we had before, obviously, you bring up a good point, because you could not tell if you had a, a black car under the canopy, a green car, a blue car, and law enforcement would always contact us to see if we could furnish them video on a particular car that maybe was involved in a, in a criminal act or whatever. And like you said, the condition was, was terrible. So after having spoken with Chris Luganbuehl and a few others, we came up with the, the lighting that we installed in 2015. And, and it's, it's worked out great, because we have furnished law enforcement several videos of a particular vehicle that they were trying to see if they could locate.
Okay, well, thank you very much for what you just offered. The other thing is, you say that you work with Chris Luganbuehl, and if the lighting that you worked out in conjunction with his help is appropriate for the canopy, and perhaps we can continue with that for your new canopy, because it doesn't add that much. The only, in that case, the only thing that I would probably ask other commissioners to consider would be to lower the color temperature of the pack lighting that you have, because although, you actually get a pass on that, because it's under 2,500 lumens for that. So technically, all we can do is debate it and suggest perhaps that if the commission doesn't agree, it would be a no change to the pack lighting, since it's under 2,500 lumens. That's the loophole in the, in the code right now. So, we'll see.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles, Commissioner Walters. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ruggles, did you have more?
Oh, no, I've had enough to say already, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Walters.
Mr. Flores, I, I like your plan, you, you put a lot of thought and effort into it. The one question that I have is that the, I believe the northeast corner, after people come out from underneath the canopy and the pumps, and they're heading back out to the highway, that seems to be the choke point of your property right there. Are you planning on opening that up at that end, or what are you going to do there? Couldn't somebody bring up floor plan?
Go ahead, I've got Michael James with Woodson Engineering on, on the line also, and I think what we're trying to propose is a little dog bone to try to force the traffic, you know, in, in a manner that goes south, and then comes back up north, and then makes that right-hand turn, and to try to mitigate any congestion from, from the Kachina residents and to the traffic that's trying to pull out back onto the freeway. So, and maybe, Michael, are you on the line?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes. Mr. James, would you please state your name and address for the record, please, and then proceed with your comments?
Sure, my name's Michael James, work for Woodson Engineering. I live at 118 Kaowa, which is just across the highway in Mount Air, so, before I ever started on this project, I was aware of its issues. So, yeah, Bob, I don't know if you're able to bring a site plan up so we can talk about this question. I don't see this, your screen anymore, but...
Yes, I'm, I'm working on that, give me a second.
I can talk while he's, he's working on that. So, you know, we're looking to move the sign up to that northeast corner, so as it was now, there's pretty sharp drop-off there, and not too long ago, Ed paved part of that because people were missing the drop-off and kind of driving down in there from what I could tell. So that's been paved, but it's still a pretty steep drop-off. So we pulled that in, that's actually out in the county right-of-way, that area, the hard drop-off. So we pulled that in and put the sign over there to kind of protect people from going in there. You can see it there, the little landscape corner there. But the distance from the canopy to that corner there is roughly 24 feet. That, you know, two-lane local street, and we have one-way traffic there. We also looked at putting a little island in here, because this was about an 80-foot wide driveway, which, you know, people cut the corner hard coming in with trailers, and we're trying to make them turn at more of a 90-degree coming in instead of coming in at odd angles. And then, you know, really, the intent is not for people driving north to then turn around and go drive back around again, yep, they'd be doing circles around our site. So they, there's parking along the, what, the east side there, and then, you know, for them to leave the site, they could always pull back around, but it's not really intended for that. But again, there still is a lot of space there. But again, there still is a lot of space there.
Really, intended or not, I go there quite often. I have a property down by Foxborough, so I come by here a lot. My wife always makes an excuse to stop here. So I've experienced this choke point here off of that corner. And I've also been there a lot of times when the fuel trucks are there. And it gets really congested. And I just wondered how you were going to really be able to deal with that corner to get increased traffic flow through here. And that's my only question. If you think you have it solved, you know, certainly from this site plan, you can't tell. There is a lot of grade right there on that corner.
Right.
So it's just a little concerning.
And our property line, you can see that right at the north end there. So, you know, the grade on the corner there. I don't know, to expand that out and do like a more of a sweep to the right or something like that, we'd have to push our improvements off of into the county property.
I'm sure if you talked to engineering, you could work that out with them. But, you know, it's, it's something that has to be addressed, I think. You know, if you're going to do all this expansion, you certainly don't want to limit yourself with that corner. I'd go to the county and see what they're willing to work with you on.
If I can interject, this is Ed again, Flores. That road is hardly used, that frontage road for the Forest Service. So you're not going to have that much traffic that totally makes that right-hand turn that sharp there. The traffic is pretty minimal that goes through to the Forest Service using that forest road.
Yeah. I don't mean that far out. I just mean off of that corner. When you're trying to get back on the road to get on the southbound freeway, when you come out of there, you end up having to turn to the south a little bit, and then turn back around.
Yeah, I think that we submitted a traffic impact. And I don't know, did that cover that mic or not?
Um, I don't know specifically if that was in the traffic impact analysis. I'd have to go back and look at that. You know, one, I'm sorry, I forget the person who was talking.
It's Commissioner Walters.
Well, Commissioner Walters, okay. You know, as it is now, there's kind of traffic that goes two ways there. And that was also the point of putting the island there, is to sign it one-way traffic. Because, because as it is now, like I said, some people pull in kind of at an angle right at the pump, you know, almost coming at the pump there. And it does get congested. And we're trying to control that more by pushing people into the site and to have a traffic pattern set up. So with 24 feet there, I don't know how much more, and that's to the edge of the canopy. I don't know how much more we would need in that area.
And you may have handled it. You know, I just simply brought it up.
Right.
I do like the position of the little directional island there.
Right. And what I've seen is that the biggest issue has been, and you can, you know, you could pull up Google Earth and look at the picture, because the picture they captured in Google Earth or Google Maps is exactly the problem on the site. There's a trailer sticking out that blocks that entrance aisle. And I've done it with my own travel trailer and boat. I've blocked traffic trying to get gas, because, you know, you're on fumes, and that's where you got to go. But that's kind of what I've seen is the biggest thing. And then people can't back out, and they're stacked all the way out onto the road. We're trying to get them into the site and not have trailers sticking out, because there's trailer fueling areas.
Yep, I understand.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the other commissioners have any questions for the applicant or the applicant's representative? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to make a call to the public. Is there anyone that is joining us tonight that wishes to speak to the commission on this case? Okay, Mr. McMealy, you're up.
So, Madam Chair, we did have one of these phone numbers, I believe it was one of the gentlemen we were just speaking with unmuted and joined with us. Still see all these phone numbers. We've put out the information for any of these phone numbers to press star six. They will be unmuted, but I am not seeing anyone unmuting at this point.
Oh, wait a minute. And Inez Salsito.
Ah, yeah, okay, that's right, yeah.
Ms. Salsito, would you please state your name and address for the record, and then address the commission, please?
Hi, yes, my name is Inez Salsito. I am at 3491 Cachina Trail, Unit C. I am directly behind the pick-and-run. And I've lived here five years. There is currently a house two doors down from me that me and my husband are interested in, being that it would keep us in the same neighborhood. And this is what called me to be involved in this conversation with this gas station expanding. Yes, it is a convenience location for a lot of people. It is a nuisance for a lot of the residents. I see that expanding would only become a further nuisance and not a convenience for the neighborhood, other than what Mr. Flores talked about, being food being delivered or being able to pick up. Other than that, expanding the restaurants, I don't believe would give any of the locals any more convenience. We have homes in the area. As he said, I think it would also just draw more criminals to the area for cops looking, you know, like he said, I think that was a point that he kind of pointed out, that it's just going to draw more of a nuisance. And I, let me see, let me look at my notes for the rest of this here. So that's my concern. I do believe that the property at hand, am I still on?
Yes.
I'm not sure if anyone's...
Proceed.
Okay. I do not oppose to the property becoming a commercial property. That is definitely something. I've talked to the realtor with buying this house two doors down from me, which also the lighting thing, I didn't even think of the lighting thing. The gas station, or the pick-and-run as it is now, the lighting doesn't bother me. But if he's talking about expanding this, I mean, I could see there's nothing blocking us with that fence line that he is talking about. And he's just looking at pulling foliage, and people would be able to literally park in my backyard. So this is becoming a concern for me buying this property. But the lighting, I never thought about that. And I'm glad that was a big discussion, because that would ruin my views. I mean, I have beautiful skylight in the evenings. What next? What else to do? And, oh, so there, next to the property, there is, so there's the county road that runs in front of the property. But there also, off of Cachina Trail, there is a road that they've built in between the house that I'm looking at and that they've drug in dirt and everything. So is that like an option that he is looking for, to have an exit for all of these vehicles to go through? Or is it only going to be like you all talked about, the one normal in and exit that's there now? That is a problem. I had to go to work two days ago. I come out of my property, and I have to go into the oncoming traffic lane, because there are so many people trying to turn into the pick-and-run. I'm driving into oncoming traffic to get around these people, because there was an RV blocking my lane to go underneath the bridge to get on the freeway. So is that going to be the only entrance and exit to more traffic? I mean, yes, he's going to have a better area for his traffic to get around, but that doesn't expand the road from the freeway to the on-and-off ramps, which I have to go around every day. So I was wondering if they were looking at opening up another extension on the other side of the property that I'm looking at, where trucks are getting in and out where they landscaped it. That was one of my questions. Can that be answered?
Yes, Ms. Salsito, I'll go ahead and answer that one. If you looked at the site plan that was presented tonight, there is not an entry-exits proposed where you're speaking about. So that should answer that question.
I think I can address additional to that. I believe the road that you're talking about is the one for a subdivision that was approved to the lot next to the lot that we're talking about this evening. And they would have done, he's gone in and he's done a lot of grading and clearing and things like that. And he had to create a road to get to Cachina Boulevard to get in and out of that property.
Okay, so I guess on that question, my sec, on that note, my second question is, I don't know, walking the property, I walk that property every day. I walk my dog down there. There's a tree that is at the far end of that property. It's like the only tree that they kept when they tore it all down five years ago. So his proposal for the gas station, I don't know acreage, I don't know, it doesn't take up that entire lot. Or does it? Like, there's, I mean, I'm not sure if anyone...
Well, that goes, Ms. Salsito, that goes to reviewing the site plan that was presented. And I'm going to have to refer you to that. Do you have a specific, like, issue with the tree?
Like, no, 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 I'm saying, is the gas station going, the extension of the building and the extension of the gas station going to take up that entire lot size? From where the fence line is that they showed, which is what the gas station's fence line is, all the way out to that tree? I mean, does it take up everything, or is it only taking up half of it? Is like, I mean, is it going to be a huge, like, I'm talking about, I know he's talking about ATV trailers and pull-behinds and everything, but I mean, is it going to become like a pilot, where huge diesels are going to be coming in every day?
No, I do not believe that that is the intent of this. If I am wrong, I will stand corrected by Mr. Flores or his representative. But no, this is not intended to be a truck stop.
Okay. So I don't know if Mr. Flores is still on the line. I know he knows the property very well. Is the gas station and the parking lot going all the way out to the end where that tree is?
You know what, what I'm going to do, Mr. Short, just to try to, Ms. Salsito, do you have any other questions other than that? Because I'm going to have the staff answer that for you.
Okay.
Any other questions, so staff can respond all at once?
Yeah, let me just go over my notes that I've made and make sure that that, I know that is definitely one of my questions from the beginning. If the extension of the gas station will take up the entire commercial lot. Or like in his statement in the beginning, I heard something about cabins?
Ms. Salsito, can you, do you see on the screen the site plan and landscape plan?
Yes, I see it now.
Okay, now, if you look at that, you can see the fuel islands on the proposed, for the proposed development. So you can see on there how much of that lot is going to be taken up. There's your answer right there. We won't even need Mr. Short to address it, really.
Okay, and then, so the property that I'm looking to build, do you see on that back southwest end? Where you said that that road that they were coming in and off of, that's on the other side of the house that I'm looking to buy? So that from my fence line to where those parking spots are, there's only just, there'll only be just like shrubs and whatnot?
Yeah, there would be landscaping. That would be correct. As proposed on this, you are reading that correctly.
Okay. So nothing to prevent me from all these criminals that he's talking about. The police are calling to see who's headed south out of town.
Okay, let me bring some clarification to that, because Mr. Flores never said that his location is a magnet for criminals. He stated that law enforcement has contacted him in an effort to try to gain information on something that they may be looking for.
I understand my concern.
Yes, but that happens with all businesses. His business is not a criminal magnet.
It's a gas station. Okay, so then on that, yeah, I guess that is... And how do, how would anybody, I mean, if this gets passed for him to get the commercial property, is there anyone else that can propose another option to be there? Or he just gets the property, and that's what it's going to be?
Yeah, this is his. Now, I will tell you that on zone changes, this commission strictly makes a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. We do not make the final decision on a zone change. We make an approval or a denial to the Board of Supervisors. So they will be the ones that will ultimately make the final decision on that. So if for whatever reason you are not satisfied with the decision that this commission makes tonight, you can certainly pick, you can certainly address the Board of Supervisors again with your comments.
Okay, Board of Supervisors, and how do I do that?
What you're going to do, what I'm going to advise you to do, is to contact staff, and they can direct you in how to move forward on that.
Okay. Okay, that I believe is my only questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Salsito, for participating in this tonight. And again, any questions on how to go about getting where you need to be, just contact staff, and they'll be more than happy to help you. Okay, is there anyone else in the public that wishes to address the commission here tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close it to the public and open it up for commission discussion. Commissioner Burton, comments and thoughts, please?
Well, I, as you know, I am a resident in Cachina, and I drive by this daily. And I will be very happy if the traffic can get moved in and out of the roadway. I've actually stopped going in there at all, because it's such, such a mess. And you're likely to get stuck in there, and sometimes you can't even get in there. So I've even just stopped patroning the facility in general. So I think it will be a definite improvement to be able to see a little more, a little more flow of the traffic. I do think the island there to define entrance and exit is probably going to be, make a big difference. So I, I mean, I am all for the modifications. I especially am looking forward to a different appearance for the building. And, yeah, that's my opinion.
Okay, okay, thank you. Commissioner Meyer?
Yes. I think this is an example of something that looks terrific on paper, but may be a nightmare down the road. It remains to be seen. I do like the layout and everything. And it will enhance that corner. But having said that, you know, there's not going to be less traffic. There's only going to be more. There's only gonna be more, so I'm a little concerned with that. One thing I will say about, uh, uh, this isn't, uh, this corner is in 27th and Van Buren, okay? So I don't think, uh, crime is the, is really all that in that neighborhood. Just, I wanted to throw that in, so I don't think that's really that much of a concern. But I can see a lot of bottlenecking there, especially on holiday weekends with boats and RVs. It could be a real nightmare down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Best?
Well, I agree that, uh, this is probably a, a traffic flow improvement, but it's quite conditional. Uh, things can still get bottled up in there. Uh, whatever Commissioner Ruggles said about lighting, I'm, I'm all for that. Uh, he lost me a little bit in there, but, uh, generally speaking, we want the lighting to be, um, at a lower Kelvin scale, more yellow than bright white. And, um, so I can, I can support this. Uh, it's, it's not gonna solve the congestion in the long run probably, but, uh, it'll help in the short run.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ruggles?
Okay, uh, I'm gonna address something else other than lighting for part of this. Uh, and that is, um, I think the, uh, I, I'd been into the gas station for gas before. I know what the, uh, problems are that everybody's brought up. But it's gonna be very difficult to do much else to improve that, given the location and the configuration of, uh, the buildings and the canopy and the gas pumps. Uh, and that being said, I think, uh, the plan is a very good one to address, uh, the congestion problem. In terms of the, uh, the lighting, we're most of the way there in my book, uh, because I did not have the revised, uh, lighting plan that Mr. Short presented. However, um, I, what I would, uh, propose for, um, condition number five of the DRO is modified a little bit. Um, and that condition only refers to new lighting. So the existing lighting and the canopy for the existing pumps would not have to change. And that's why I asked Mr. Flores about that. Um, it is not our purview to force them to spend more money on lighting, which may already be very close to what should be, uh, or would be desirable. I do think, however, that, uh, the canopy lighting for the new canopy should be at 3,000 K because, uh, it does, uh, reduce the amount of blue light, lighting available. Uh, the lumens, uh, for watt, um, there's very little impact. Uh, there's very little impact on the photometric data, uh, by going down in the color temperature of, of that. It, um, very simply put, uh, it's not much of a compromise to make. In terms of safety and color rendition, very little compromise. And I would refer everyone to the, uh, the book that the International Dark Sky Association has published dealing with this. Um, and Mark Stentso is, uh, very well aware of this and I think he's, uh, the right guy to, uh, work on this with the applicant. The other thing is the, uh, the pack lighting, that has come down to a level, uh, proposed level that is considerably below the 2,500 lumen requirement for LPS. However, I still think that, uh, 2,700, um, K is appropriate for that. It is a significant amount of light. There is very little in terms of, uh, safety or color rendition that is given up by, uh, going to the, as a matter of fact, with a lot of, uh, 2,700 K lighting, the color rendition is actually better than lighting with higher color temperatures.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, while you're talking, um, I see someone capturing your thoughts on screen.
There it is, and, uh.
Is that accurate? Because I, because I'm gonna be honest with you, what you're talking about is so far above my pay grade. I, you lost me. So you please look at that and see if that captures your concerns.
But let me comment on it, uh, this way. Uh, first, I would like to read, uh, what, uh, I added, uh, and then crossed out here to modify it a little bit. Uh, I said additionally, the CCT or Correlated Color Temperature of Class 1 luminaires, which is the canopy lighting, shall be 3,000 K or less. No problem buying those and installing them. And Class 2 luminaires shall have a CCT of 2,700 K or less. Now essentially, that's what I'm seeing right here in front of me on the screen. Uh, and, uh, with wall lighting, I think we can, um, forgive, uh, the, uh, color temperature of a walkway lighting under the, uh, overhang where people will be walking. Um, so saying all new canopy lighting shall be 3,000, uh, well, actually, uh, I'd like to correct that a little bit. Shall be, shall be 3,000 K. Kelvin isn't exactly, uh, considered, uh, the, uh, correct terminology anymore. Just 3,000 K and all wall lighting shall be 2, 2,700 K or less. Um, that would, uh, that would really tie it up. And the rest of it, it's such a small amount of additional lighting that I think it's inconsequential at this, everybody's free on this.
Okay, and I think Commissioner Ruggles, uh, staff captured that. And I believe that if you look there, exactly the verbiage that you had stated has now been, um, is now in number five.
That is it, pure and simple, in fewer words than I would have proposed, which is very good.
Okay, okay, thank you. Do you have any additional, uh, thoughts during commission discussion?
Nothing to add to this. Uh, I can definitely make the findings with that one change and, uh, would be in favor of, uh, well, everything that we're gonna have to make three motions on.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Walters?
It's all in this head. I support it. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Clifford?
Uh, yeah, I can support it. Everybody says everything I was going to.
Oh, okay, um, all right, then I'm up. And, uh, Mr. Short, on the condition number five, um, underneath, no, excuse me, condition number six, under the one you just typed, um, above, do you feel that that condition is going to really help kind of minimize, mitigate the issues that have been brought up tonight about kind of the bottlenecking right there? Do you think that's gonna help maybe alleviate something?
Uh, Madam Chair, I, that is kind of standard language for a traffic impact analysis. So that, that analysis would, uh, look at the traffic situation on site and determine whether new, you know, like improved conditions, uh, especially off, I think this refers more to off-site conditions. So I don't know if it's gonna really address that. And I would actually ask the applicant, especially Mr., um, uh, Janz, to, uh, comment on that. He might have some more information than that, being an engineer.
Oh, okay, and let me, let me just interject this though. But it says that any issues that are identified by the TIA are gonna be, they're gonna be completed by the applicant. So if there are any things outstanding there that, that they feel A dot needs done, it is gonna be addressed.
That is correct.
Um, okay, um, Mr. James, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, yeah, we, we have already completed a traffic impact analysis. Um, and we're not, we're not solving the entire area's problems is what we came to with, uh, with the county. Um, but we, we've proven through the traffic impact analysis that we're not making them any worse and we're actually improving them some by getting the traffic off the road.
Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ruggles? I see you unmute. Do you wanna?
Oh, uh, that is an error on my part. Uh, I have nothing further to add at this point until we're through making motion.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, um, then I'm up. Um, kind of, I think, I think like Commissioner Walters and Commissioner Clifford stated, it's been said, so I'm not going to take up any additional time, um, going over what is, going over the obvious. I will state that this is a beautiful, um, design. Um, you know, as, as a kind of a fellow colleague in this industry, I thoroughly understand, um, and appreciate the issues that Mr. Flores is trying to, to solve. Um, I think he's done. I, I really think that he has done a very good job at thoughtfully looking to, um, you know, to design this new development. I don't think that it was just really nearly thrown together. I think that there has been some thought in it. And I think that there is going to be, um, some benefit. At least we're gonna be getting the traffic off of the roadway and it's going to be in his development. And by getting those larger vehicles all the way down to the south end, that's gonna free it up. I, I, I really think that it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be a great improvement from what's going on now. And like I said, it is a beautiful development. So I can make the findings on all of the issues that are before us tonight. So, um, let's, we've got three motions that we need to make. So someone, someone go ahead and start.
Okay, nobody else wants to speak up? I will.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, uh, let's, uh, start with, uh, the zoning change, ZC dash 20 dash 006. Uh, I make a motion that we forward a recommendation to the board of supervisors for approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, let's see. I, okay, this is what I heard. I heard a, a motion for recommendation of approval by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Burton. All in favor, say aye. Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, Meyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Ontiveris, aye. Uh, the motion passes unanimously. Second motion, please?
Okay, I'll alleviate the silence here.
Thank you.
I, I would like to make a motion for approval of CUP 20 dash 023, as written by staff.
I'll second.
I'll second that, please.
Okay, um, Tiana Beach array. Okay, I thought the motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Burton for approval of CUP 20 dash 023. All in favor, say aye. Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Ontiveris, aye. Uh, the motion passes unanimously and now we've got one final motion.
Okay, I'll go for that one too. Uh, I would like to make a motion to approve DRO 20 dash 003 with condition five as modified by staff.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a, uh, a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Burton for approval of DRO, uh, 20 dash 003. All in favor, say aye. Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ontiveris, aye. Uh, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Flores, you've done a great job. The next case on the agenda is case number CUP 20 dash 024.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. This is CUP 20 024. It's a request for a conditional use permit for a 12-unit campground in the G-zone, that's general 10-acre minimum. Oops. And it is, the subject's property is located at 2867 West Honeysuckle Road in the Red Lake area. And so here's a map up here. You can see Highway 64 over here on the right side of the screen. And the subject property is quite a bit west of that. Uh, the parcel size of the property is 15.06 acres. And the applicant for this request is Grand Canyon Glamping LLC out of Phoenix. The applicant's representatives are Eric Rubenstein and Tom Staub, both from Phoenix, and I saw that they were on the line with us. Uh, the owner of the property is Door Scout LLC out of Sheraton, Washington, uh, sorry, Wyoming. And the subject property is vacant in the general zone and surrounded by vacant properties in the general zone. Uh, here I have on the slide, the top photo is from the subject property looking east on Honeysuckle Road. So let me go back real quick. Honeysuckle Road right here to the south side of the property is accessed. So this is standing at the, the corner looking eastward onto Honeysuckle Road. You can see that it's not, um, an improved road, but it's really well graded. Uh, and the bottom photo is from, basically just turned around, looking northwest now onto the property. You can see those very tall Pinion Juniper. Here's the, the county truck to see the scale of it. The Pinion Juniper in there is about eight to 10 feet tall. Uh, the proposed developments, the, the applicant proposes the 12-unit campground with, uh, 10 tents and two Airstream RVs. The applicant's site plan shows all the units in the southern portion of the property. Each unit would have an attached patio, individual water tank for hauled water. And I wrote in the staff report that there would be individual subject systems, but that's not correct. Uh, they would actually use a common subject for, uh, the common restroom facilities. Uh, the submitted plans note that the use, or note that there would be use of composting toilets and gray water systems. The applicant also notes that each unit would have electricity hookups. The applicant proposes two units that would be accessible by the disabled in accordance with American with Disabilities Act, also NOSADA, ADA. Those are these units with that little symbol on it right there. There's also a parking spot here. Um, the applicant also proposes two community restroom structures and an enclosed dumpster location for solid waste. Internal driveways and a portion of Honeysuckle Road adjacent to the property, as shown in submitted site plan, are 12-foot travel lanes, um, that are improved with compacted cinders. That's what's proposed. Uh, one thing that you don't see, so this site plan is the southern most portion of the property. This cinder driveway continues up this way and then eventually it leads back to a cul-de-sac here, uh, on kind of an extension of Honeysuckle going north, uh, north, south. And here are some examples that the applicant submitted to show what possibly the Airstream would look like. On the left, you can see the attached duct there. Uh, and on the right, this is possibly, uh, what their tent units would, would sort of look like. Um, staff recommends that these structures meet all applicable restrictions for height, setback and construction, and that they be earth toned or green colors to blend with the natural environment of the area. No landscaping plan is shown, but staff recommends that the applicant remove as little plan material as possible as is already planned. That they've shown on their site plan, it looks like they've really avoided taking away any vegetation that's already existing there. And that existing eight to 10-foot tall Pinion Juniper should act as a pretty good buffer between this property and neighboring properties. I have in the staff report for you, a list of different performance standards that are always required for campgrounds in the general zone. And so I'll just go through those, uh, requirements and, and note how the applicant is, is conforming to them. So the first is that you have a minimum of parcel size of 10 acres for campgrounds in the G-zone, and this is over 15, so that requirement is met. Maximum density is two unit, units per acre. And so the applicant's plans are only for 12, where 30 would be permissible. So the applicant is conforming there. The typical requirement for the campgrounds is that they be accessed on a county-maintained road. However, there is an allowance for a waiver. However, there is an allowance for a waiver from that, subject to five criteria. And, um, the applicant has submitted a, and this should be attached to the staff report. They have submitted a write-up to, um, kind of their merit for the waiver and staff does believe that there is merit there, but we're just looking at a final review for Public Works and Engineering. So there's condition three to kind of follow up on that. Staff does believe we're pretty much there. I'm going to go ahead and, and read the waiver criteria and the response from the applicant. A is that the granting of the waiver will not diminish the ability for emergency service providers to access the property and carry out their services. The applicant's response is that the fire chief lives two minutes away and is very familiar with the roads leading to the project. He states in his letter, which is also attached, this is a firewise plan that I'll discuss a little bit later, that the width, surface and condition of the road is sufficient for fire emergency apparatus to access the property safely. The second criteria for the waiver on being on a county maintained road is that the granting of the waiver will not put an undue maintenance burden or impact on others that legally use the access. The applicant's response is that there was a traffic study. This is also attached to the staff report conducted and this was done by CDNE. It showed that there was a minimal uptick in overall traffic along the access. And the peak hour trips, the minimal peak hour trips eliminate the need for a full trip, traffic impacts analysis. So this was a traffic, um, statement. And no off-road improvements should be required. Despite this conclusion, Grand Canyon Glamping will raid and address any road issues in an timely manner when requested by the, um, High County Fire Department and the neighboring properties. Uh, finding C for the waiver is that the granting of the waiver is consistent with all applicable engineering standards set by Public Works or Engineering Division. Um, the applicant does respond to this, but I guess at the end of the day, the requirement that's put on it is that it is able to carry a 42,000 gross vehicle weight uh, vehicle on top of it. And so that's something that's conditioned there and that's kind of what's awaiting the final review by Engineering and Public Works is that the, either the surfacing that exists to get to the property is capable of doing that or what kind of improvements would be required. That's something that, um, Engineering and Public Works will, will go on the back end and, and figure that out. Um, so that should be met. Uh, D is that the granting of the waiver will not have a negative impact on neighboring properties or improvements, especially as related to uh, dust and traffic safety. The applicant's response is that we have been working directly with neighbors who have direct frontage on Honey Circle Road and all in favor of our project. Our positive relationships, open communication and willingness to help will ensure that we maintain the road to its current condition or better to ensure the safety of our neighbors and guests. So staff does believe that we're pretty much almost there and everything else, uh, is in, should be in the condition number three for, um, this second requirement of access on the county maintained road, or in this case getting the waiver. The third requirement of campgrounds in the general zone is having a 50-foot compatibility setback from adjacent residential zone parcels and that is met as we see, saw on the site plan. There is a requirement that if you're doing a mixture of RVs and tents, that RVs only account for 20% or less of, for that ratio of the, of all the camp, uh, sorry, yeah, camp site units. And so they're showing two RV spaces of 12, um, uh, so that is meeting that requirement. As far as, uh, compatibility pan, plan with adjacent residential properties, just making sure that any impacts that might be had from this commercial type of use being directly adjacent to um, residential properties. The applicant did submit a narrative about compatibility with neighboring residential properties. Uh, it did note the distance away from the property boundaries, the 50-foot buffer that we discussed. It discussed, uh, that they would have quiet hours between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Uh, they said that they would prohibit loud music, large gatherings, prohibit ATVs and other loud motorized vehicles and that they won't have any generators. So there won't be much noise impact or that sort of impact. So they did address that and staff feels that they are conforming to the requirement. Uh, there is a requirement that campgrounds either be within a fire district or that they get a subscription service for the, uh, entirety of the duration of the use happening there. So and then also associated with that, that they have a firewise and emergency response plan uh, with the uh, fire agency of the area. So the applicant did submit a letter from the fire chief.
Um, Mr. Schwartz, we lost you.
I'm sorry about that.
That's okay, that's okay.
What's the last thing that you heard me say?
Um, about the fire chief, a letter from the fire chief.
Gotcha, okay. So all that I really had to say when I was winding up was that that we did get a letter and it was attached to the staff report and a firewise plan that was agreed upon with the applicants and um, the fire department. And so that requirement, staff sees that as being met. So all of the kind of line by line requirements of this, of the zoning ordinance for campgrounds in the G zone, staff sees those as being met. Uh, I wanted to move on to the compliance with long-range plans. So I've just put a little summary here and if you wanted to get into any of the goals and policies that I've laid out in the staff report, I'm happy to do that with the commission. And basically the comprehensive plan has multiple goals and policies that support tourism and especially developments that have low environmental impacts. So this is that sort of use. The Red Lake Area Plan, uh, does have policies that allow commercial resorts throughout the planning areas. So staff feels that this, though not anticipated or not even allowed use back when the Red Lake Area Plan was originally created, staff interprets the Red Lake Area Plan as being met as the way that this is planned is sort of like a commercial resort. So staff does find that the applicable long-range plans do support the use. As far as the findings of facts, in order to approve the conditional use permit, the first is that the proposed